Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. So we've already opened the meeting and we went into executive session and have adjourned from executive session. And before we begin with our agenda, I just have a couple of comments I would like to make. As many people know, we are losing two of our very valued and school staff and, and school committee. This is the last school committee meeting for them. And I just would like to say a few words. Michael McMillan, wherever, oh, there he is with the headset on. He's leaving to go on to Montemoy, which is a district much closer to his home. And it's been, he joined us in July of 2018. And for those of you who were here in 2018, he was the fifth businessman manager I had in my fourth, four years on the school committee. And he was a breath of fresh air and he and I clicked, I think, because I like numbers, he likes numbers, I like analytics, he likes analytics, I like charts, he likes charts. And I really respect the work that he's done for the district. He's brought organization, tremendous thought and insight into not just, you know, generating the numbers, but thinking about them. He anticipated questions I would have before I would even ask them. And he cemented, you know, along with Dr. Sullivan and the team, he really has cemented our district's position with the town, our credibility with the town. It had been waning prior, you know, in, in the last years before, in terms of, you know, our FT number wasn't always right, our enrollment was up, it was down, it was up, it was down. And that was a function of systems and people changing. And I, I feel very proud of the fact that Dr. Sullivan and, and Michael have really done a great job, formed great alliances with our town counterparts. And they listen and they know when they get information from us, it's solid. So I, I thank you for that, Michael, and I really appreciate it. And I just want to wish you the best. And the committee gave, gave out little gifts and I dropped Michael's off at school the other day. I don't know if he can, he has it with him to show, but it's a little Cohasset, Cohasset memorabilia, so he never forgets us.
Do you know what? I left it in my car when I came running in to start this meeting, so.
Okay, that's all right. That's all right.
It's very nice, but thank you very much. And thanks for your kind words, Ellen. I mean, I mean, I think everybody here knows that I would not be leaving if it weren't for this opportunity, just so much closer to my home. I'm gonna, sad it came up so soon. I thought I had a few, a few more years at Cohasset longer. I like working here so much. I've been very lucky in the staff I've got to work with and, and the leadership team and also the, you know, Geraldine and, hey, Donna and the business office, you know, and everyone that works in central office. It's been a pleasure to work there and I've really enjoyed it, but thank you very much.
Well, I'll have to hit you up because I think, and Steve can validate this, I think boys' basketball is playing Montemoy this year. Is that, is that on the schedule?
That's correct, we'll be there.
So we'll be, so you'll have to come cheer on the skippers.
Yeah, the boys, the bus drivers are telling me that they do sometimes come up to games in Montemoy, which they're very grumpy about because it's so far.
Oh, it's a long ride. That's a long ride. So, Dr. Sullivan, I didn't know if you wanted to jump in.
Yeah, I thought I'd do my part, no Scottish brogue. Just, now, I'm just kidding. Yeah, Michael, you know, I wrote a little thing here, but nothing too fancy, but I, I just say, although we wish Michael luck in his new job near his home, we will miss Michael's professionalism, his thorough and detailed approach, and his wit and sincerity. You know, Michael is, as you said, Ellen, a systems thinker who brought a collaborative budget process and vision to Cohasset. And he's leaving us really with a firm foundation that we can build upon to project, to project our vision of Cohasset Public Schools really well into the future. Michael is a fabulous listener and he is thoughtful in his approach to everything. He takes time to look at problems from all angles and he is able to acknowledge other viewpoints respectfully while still holding to his convictions when needed. I have also watched Michael hear a logical response, reflect on it, and incorporate those thoughts into future plans. He has a really uncanny ability to be able to take in information as he holds his, his own convictions and to, to adjust it if he feels like someone's made a, a great point. Michael is also an excellent communicator who's transparent with information, he's open to feedback, he's always reflective on how he can do a better job collecting voice and providing information to others. And perhaps most prominently, Michael is a person of high character who makes all his decisions with those he impacts, particularly and most certainly, the students in mind. And on a personal level, you know, I'll miss him as an advisor and co-planner, but I feel fortunate to have him as a friend and I look forward to continuing their friendship for many years to come. So, Michael, thank you. I don't have a parting gift right now, but we do have some time to locate the best parting.
Hey, the clock's ticking.
We're combing, we're combing the Cohasset for the perfect gift. But thank you, Michael, for all you've done for the Cohasset Public Schools and we wish you and Kate and your joy with your family and everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, Patrick. I really enjoyed working with you all as well. And I mean, in pure British, in true British style, it's very difficult for me to hear people talk, say nice things about me, but I really appreciate it. And I am glad this has been recorded, so I may have to borrow this recording at some point.
Right, you can, it's good, it's good to, it's good to, you know, it's self reaffirming.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, thank you very much. It really is. I really feel like, you know, together we've all really progressed so far with Cohasset and responded so well to these difficult times and I'm really proud to have been part of this team, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so the next member of our team who's, this is her last school committee meeting, is Jen Madden. And I kind of struggled with this one a little bit, um, because I didn't know where to start with Jen. I feel like Jen has been the soul of the committee, she has been our conscience. She understands what advocacy is for our students, she knows it's more than just the four walls around them, she knows it's what they're learning, how they're progressing and how they're achieving their own academic goals. She understands our curriculum, our assessments, how to interpret our assessments and how to respond in our instruction. She's a teacher, she understands, she brings that, she's brought that viewpoint to us. And it's been very, very important, whether, you know, she talks about tiered interventions or child study teams and all the other mechanisms we have to help our children. It's been invaluable, it's been invaluable for me. I've learned an awful lot about things that, that sometimes sound Greek to me, the acronyms, sometimes they sound Greek. Ask me a percentage or a number or anything like that or a statistic, I, I can get it, but, but the, the qualitative part of instruction has been challenging and Jen has been our voice on the committee for the students. She's passionate about it, she knows about it. And she also is willing to dive in and do the work and to look at our assessments and to make informed questions based on those assessments. She walks the walk and she talks the talk. So, and she's always voted her conscience on the committee, she's always stood up for what she's believed in, and she's always been true to herself. And I think Ashley commented once when we approved a policy, Jen got excited and Ashley said, "I love how you get excited." And that's how Jen is, she gets excited when we make progress on things. So, um, I'm gonna miss her, she has, she's leaving us big shoes to fill. I, I know she'll be successful in her next endeavor in, in the world of academics and teaching and instruction. And I just wanted to say, um, thank you for your service.
And it's been a pleasure to serve and, unlike Michael, it's hard for me to hear all of this, but I, I am so proud of this district and I am so proud of the leadership team, the administrators, the support personnel. It's the progress that we've made in the last three years and that's a, has been really amazing and it's been a joy to see. And I'm, I'm not going away. And I will always advocate because I think students need strong advocates. There's always more that can be done and that's not to say that what's being done isn't excellent at the same time. But it's been a real honor and thank you for your kind words. And, oh, I have my awesome parting gift, which is my 413 coaster. It's very beautiful and I will set it out with pride and it will remind me of what's been a really interesting, challenging time and I wouldn't have given it up for the world. So, it's been a pleasure and what really makes me happy is that we have two candidates running for this one seat and both are, bring different strengths and I'm sure there, whoever takes my seat will, will be a, a strong committee member, so thank you.
And if I could just add, just quickly, Jennifer, I did invite something out for you, but I, I just, from my heart, want to thank you on behalf of the leadership team, the students, the teachers of Cohasset. You have, I think, you're very student-centered and you have a great mix of really striving and making sure that everyone strives for high standards while still looking out for the underdog and making sure that you advocate for students who might be struggling, students who might be underrepresented, students who may not have learned in a traditional way. So, that spirit, it was in everything you do and I really appreciated that, working with you. So, we'll very much miss you and I know you're not going anywhere though, so it's good, good to have your ear and your, your counsel. Thank you, Jennifer.
Great, thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, and lastly, well, I still have the floor and I appreciate everybody waiting here. I just want to say, I just want to thank all of you, all of the teachers, the ESPs, the nurses, the counselors, the therapists, the custodians, the food service workers, secretaries, the central office staff, the bus drivers, our coaches, and the entire leadership team for what undoubtedly has been the most trying time in everyone's career. Our children and our grandchildren, well, not my children, but maybe my grandchildren will be learning about the pandemic of 2020 and we can all say we survived it. Since the 13th of March, this has been a whole new playbook, has come in, into our world. Remote enrichment, learning and instruction models were developed in real time, not planned for, every, every call was an audible. I mean, you're always at the line of scrimmage and you had to get it done. To the teachers and the principals and the assistant principals and the ESPs, thank you so much for keeping our students engaged, for checking in with them. I heard from parents who said, "I got a call from a teacher," or "I got a note from a teacher saying, 'I haven't heard from so-and-so in three days or two days,' or you might want to check your email." Above and beyond, definitely above and beyond. And much appreciated by the parents I've spoken with. Oops, sorry, I lost my place here. Teachers have done everything they could to keep our young minds in Cohasset thinking and solving problems and staying connected. And I'd also like to thank at this time, our retirees, Patty Thompson, Kate Nelligan, Peg Jordan, Maggie Smith, Trish Baldwin, and Joan McTie. I'd like to thank them all for their dedication, their service to Cohasset Public Schools and wish them nothing but the best in retirement. So, wanted to say that, I don't know when I'll have another opportunity to do so. So, with that being said, Dr. Sullivan, you can take it away with the superintendent's report.
Yes, absolutely. And thank you, Ellen. Yeah, your, your words, I, I could not echo more. You know, I, I publicly want to thank this team, the leadership team here for the work they've done with their staff. And one of the great things about this leadership team is usually when that comes up, they direct attention right to the staff and say, "It was the staff that did the great work." And that is true, but I want to take a moment and just say there, they did an amazing job as well, inspiring their, their teams. And we talk a lot some, in our leadership circles about the need at times to bring the temperature down when things get really tough. And they did a lot of that, a lot of that this spring, working with people to problem solve and to help their individual situations. So, thank you so much and I echo your thoughts about our retirees. There were, there were, there were events planned for all of them, but it was nice to play a part in some of the drive-through motorcade celebrations for our retirees. They're amazing educators, they've left a long legacy with the students and the families and the staff. Quite frankly, you know, they're all teacher leaders in their own way. And we're gonna miss them very much, but they can feel very good about the legacy they have left. We had some wonderful celebrations this, this past week with our students. It was nice to be, to play as much of a part in them as I could. We, I was at the, the drive-throughs with Leslie and the principals and, and the teachers and it was really warm, all of them were warm, wonderful representation of our district. And I think it was impossible to go through that motorcade and not feel that the teachers really cared about the kids. And you could see that everything starts with that relationship between the teacher and the kid and it was really on display. And thank you principals and leaders for, for showing that. And then we had a wonderful, Principal Scott and Tara here, I'll just compliment them and their team again on our great diploma, I guess you'd call it a diploma picture opportunity at the South Shore, the Cohasset Music Circus. And thank you Cohasset Music Circus and everyone in the town who helped with that, Dan Leahy for this photography. And I know we could go on and on thanking people, but that was great and I think a really nice moment for our seniors and families. You could see it, it was, and it was also very social distancing safe and we're looking forward to our graduation coming up on August 7th. And we'll see about the other events, you know, yet the August 5th, the prom planned and August 6th, a potential gathering of, of, with a, some sort of class event. So, we'll see how that develops, but more and more hopeful we'll be able to do something on those dates and clearly the graduation is, is in place. So, with all that, with all that said, and it was important to say that, I, I did ask our leadership team to be here today as a pledge and we all talked about this and wanted to be here to make sure that, I know the committee knows this, but it's really for the public, for the public to understand our pledge, to make sure that we continue to and lead in even a greater way with cultural competency, education around racial issues and anti-racism discourse and discussions throughout our curricula. It's very important to us, it's what we're made of. I should mention to people who don't know that we are a very new team. In fact, I had the pleasure of playing a role in hiring Alex when she came in a couple of years ago. And this year I was able to, to work to hire Brian, and Brian hiring, of course Tara, and then hiring John as the middle school principal and John hiring Kate. And then, of course, I have Leslie who's took my place. We are a brand new team who, day one, went to our strategic plan and made sure that we put cultural competency as a major goal for us this year and worked with Alisa and her experience to craft that. And Alisa, I want to give her a big thanks for, for really leading a lot of that in the district too, making sure that we have a, we, we give a voice for the Boston students and her advocacy in helping everyone. You know, she's been instrumental in helping in book clubs and setting up that amazing professional development that will be realized in the fall. So, that's what we're about, we are about that. And I, I wanted to, in these times when, you know, it deserves real, real strong leadership and these are times that we have to realize the role of the schools in forwarding, all of that I just spoke of. And I want people to just get a sense for what we've been doing and what we hope to do going forward. Another major focus of ours is going to be to try to get a, a more diverse staff here in Cohasset. And obviously that's been on the docket for, I would imagine, a couple of strategic plans and it hasn't happened. We've fallen short in that. And we're gonna dig deep and open ourselves up to resources so that we can make sure we do that. And I've had some conversations with Alisa about how we might be able to use our amazing Boston students who graduated and then want to come back and teach as potential interns that could potentially open up positions for them within this amazing school district. But it needs to go deeper than that. And I, we really want, when people think of Cohasset, to think about that small town, wonderful town on the South Shore that really values diversity and is really centered on cultural competency. And I think if that word gets out, more than anything, that's gonna draw in potential teachers of color who will very much help all of our students here at Cohasset. So, what I thought would be nice is, because we do share this common pledge, is to just go down and have the principals talk a little bit about what they've been doing over the last couple of years. And for some, you know, it's, it was, we got started on it and then the pandemic hit, but it's not gonna stop us. This is not a short burst of energy, this is something that we need to have in our fabric as, as a district and, and I know that's what we have as leaders. And those who I hired as leaders in this district, the, one of the major reasons I hired them and it was a major focus in everything that we did, was the idea that they're very much in favor of and they're tied into social justice issues. Having worked with John Mills at Marshfield, I know that he, that's what makes him tick, knowing Brian and the years I've known him and seeing what he's done over the year that are almost a year now that he's been principal, reaffirm that, that, that is part of his pulse. So, and I know certainly Alex and, and this team is a, is a team that is linked into that. So, I want to give them an opportunity to talk a little bit about what's happening in their buildings and then we'll sort of circle around and end with Leslie and Alisa talking about what we're doing right now. Some of it might be crossover, but first I just want to make sure I, I tell people who's here, because I, I really appreciate this entire leadership team, we're a true team. So, I, I don't know, might be awkward for me to have you introduce yourselves, I'll just, maybe we just give a wave when I say who you are, might be easier than trying to go through the process of the, the unmuting. So, obviously we have Susan Owen, who is our incoming director of finance and operations. I'm not sure she's, you can hear us, but Susan's down there, she's there. Then she goes, okay, good. We have sat at the top here from Brian Scott, who is our high school principal, Tara Noiz, who is our high school assistant principal. We have John Mills, who is our middle school principal. We have Dr. Kate Salas, who is our middle school assistant principal. We have Sandy Crowe, who is our head nurse. And Sandy's been on all of our leadership calls throughout the pandemic and, you know, it's been helpful having her there for sure. So much of this has been a health issue. We have Alex Sullivan, Alexandra Sullivan, who is our principal at Deer Hill. And we have Lisa's always, well, she's not last, I'm waiting for Steve here, so, Lea, I filled back because I always do it in that order, Lisa Farrell, who is our Osbid principal. And we do have Steve Rotundi, who is our athletic director, who is also new, by the way. He, he did a fabulous intern last year and Steve is very much about diversity and making sure that everyone has a voice in athletics and that's really important. And then those folks who are here regularly, we have Dr. Leslie Collins, our assistant superintendent, and Michael McMillan, who is sadly our outgoing director of finance and operations, but we are happy to have Susan, so that's good too. And then, of course, I mentioned the great work that Alisa has done, Alisa Gittens-Carl, our MECO director, and has done so much work with, with all of this, so thank you, Alisa. So, that's the team that's here. I don't think I'm missing anybody else, but I know that everyone else who couldn't be here on our leadership team, there's a couple, are here in spirit. So, let's start with Brian, principal at the high school, Brian Scott, to talk a little bit about what's happened in the high school over the last couple of years.
Sure, so thank you, then, thank you, Ellen, and thanks for the invitation. I think I'll start by really looking at what we've been, what we've been able to do at the high school since I moved into this role this year and partly last, but it goes back about three years with the, the beginning of it. As I hope I've been able to communicate publicly by now, my biggest priority in, in Cohasset and, you know, frankly, it predates my time in Cohasset, is to develop a positive culture in which students are excited to come to school. You know, I think that, that for any learning to take place, you must have an environment where students feel welcomed and challenged. And that requires identifying those populations that feel estranged and creating structures that help build their voice and see themselves as integral parts of the community. And that, you know, certainly includes our Black students, but it's much broader than that for me. So, the first step, as Pat mentioned, was identifying it as a priority. And that's not just done in the district strategic plan, but it's in the school improvement plans as well, which are really the blueprint for my own and the, and the other principals' individual evaluation. So, it's, you know, my performance is directly tied to how well we do this. Second, you know, we needed a unbiased assessment of where we are and so we implemented the institutional climate inclusion assessment three years ago. This was developed by a Harvard graduate student who also happened to be a minority in the Newton schools and I believe part of MECO in that program. And what made her survey very different than other cultural surveys, and I've been doing those for, for the better part of 20 years, was that she wanted to measure how kids internalize the culture at Cohasset. So, it was a survey that gave us data that was less about, you know, these sweeping cultural characteristics and it really dove deep and targeted how specific demographics saw themselves as reflected in the culture that were projected. And, you know, to no one's surprise, if you weren't white, straight, able-bodied and, you know, relatively well-off, it wasn't particularly inclusive. And that's something that I've talked about for a long time, you know, shedding this kind of superficial image of what it means to be a Cohasset kid and having students articulate who they are both as individuals and then us as a school community that goes deeper into who they are as people and who we are as a group. So, that phrase isn't, or shouldn't be unfamiliar to kids. You know, they've long recognized, going back to my first valedictorian speech, that Cohasset operates in a bit of a bubble. And, and, you know, they say that, recognizing, I think, that, that can be problematic, as much as it can be, you know, kind of quaint at the same time. So, three years ago, we put our first survey out and then we conducted our second one this past February. So, we're waiting on the data from that to see how we fared over the two-year span, a little bit delayed because of the, obviously because of the pandemic. So, we had our priorities and our data and needed to begin the work of educating folks, but we also needed to create safe spaces for those conversations to begin. And the classroom is normally the first place you'd look to start those, but we're so lacking in diversity that often the person of color is the only one in the class and then they become the spokesperson for everything. And that was something we wanted to avoid and frankly, something that requires a lot of teacher training in order to navigate a conversation like that without everyone looking kind of in the same direction. So, that teacher training was slotted for March, the week after we closed, I think it was the full week that we closed, and I believe has been rescheduled to October. But in the meantime, we started with, you know, smaller affinity type groups of students, so students who share a similar identity and experience. And we took the approach that we weren't going to direct the conversation as a predominantly white faculty and building, but we're gonna create spaces for those conversations to happen and then dedicate time and resources to those groups, facilitate conversations as issues come up, because they are still kids and some of them are contentious, and lend institutional support to the importance of the groups and their stories. And so, and we had dedicated faculty members really eager to do that outside of the contract, outside of, you know, being paid as, as club advisors. So, in that sense, you know, I'll use this language that I recently read, "We were more accomplices than allies," you know, as one scholar put it, you know, "using the tools and the resources that we have in order to support the messages that they have." So, a couple of things, we moved the MECO office back into the high school and set up an all MECO student advisory. We created and gave resources to both the diversity club and the Asian culture club, provided opportunities where those groups could begin to get their experiences out there. And they worked with the elementary schools to promote some cultural awareness, worked with the high school community to, you know, prominently display and educate and celebrate diversity, doing things like book fairs and, you know, creating awareness around different cultural celebrations and religious holidays. In the beginning of the, the year, that group also met with our department heads to talk about their experiences as recipients of our curriculum and, you know, granted, a large part of our curriculum is dictated by the state, but we do have some latitude over texts and resources and how the conversations go. So, the department heads were really listening to what their experiences were as they kind of chronicled their four years. We also revised the summer reading, working with the PSO in particular and including in the PSO some of our Middle Eastern population there. And that was last summer, not this, this present summer. And we saw an increase in student voice this year and that increase led to a conversation with one of our students last, last February, two Februaries ago, about her experience in a particular class and her suggestion that we consider showing what was newly released then, the movie The Hate U Give. And we decided that would be an all-school viewing with a follow-up panel discussion and smaller classroom discussions. And that included panelists of students, their parents, police, and other MECO representatives to really, you know, get that voice out there prominently. And that was very well received. At the beginning of this year, we continued the faculty conversations with the creation of a book club that read both White Fragility and Beyond the World and Me. We scheduled an all-school anti-bullying. We scheduled an all-school anti-bullying workshop in partnership with the Anti-Defamation League and the Marines in October. We brought in Challenge Day to the senior class and that was really designed to build empathy. We had 30 or I think 30 faculty and coaches working with every one of our senior class with the exception of a handful. We also contracted with a group called One Love to provide work around sexual violence and healthy relationships. And they did one round in the fall for sophomores and then one planned for the seniors in the spring as they anticipated going off to college, but that was canceled due to COVID. We also had some groups going to the ADL Stand Up Against Hate Conference, but that was also canceled. So we had a couple of things that we couldn't, couldn't quite do. For me, you know, I've tried to lend direct voice all year to the prominence of these issues and you know, it's predominantly through my newsletter, but over Twitter and, and other venues as, as they come up. And that voice has been echoed by student voices in initiatives like Jess Moy's I Choose poster campaign, which deliberately targeted the use of language among the student body. Steve Rotandi worked with her, our athletic director, and he's been using his captain's counsel to try to get them to, to advocate for such issues and stand up and be prominent and use their position of, of relative social power to get the message out there so that students were kind of locked in arms. And they've done some good things. They created an empathy wall in the upper lobby in response to the situation we had in the winter. And of course we've, we've seen, you know, clear student concern around the most recent incidents with participation from both students and faculty in the townwide vigil and the protests. And most recently Monday night in a facilitated conversation between our student council and our MEKO students. That was facilitated by some, some people from MEKO. And finally, as you know, as part of our summer reading, we've assigned an all-school read about the experience of a MEKO student from Weston. You know, in terms of planning next year, obviously a lot is up in the air, but we've been talking to Challenge Day about doing some virtual programming that potentially hit all students and faculty and parents. So you know, institutionally, we've made some strides, although you know, if I'm being candid, you know, some of these things have been controversial. The I Choose campaign didn't have a lot of support from the parent community, the, the showing of The Hate U Give and the empathy wall were met with some controversy among, you know, some of the residents mostly concerned that they were too controversial or they were going to incite tensions with groups like the police. You know, things that to my knowledge didn't happen. And in fact, I thought the outcomes were, were quite the opposite. So, you know, that kind of caution and deflection mirrors my experience as an assistant principal and as a principal with students who use racist and sexist, sexist language because they all kind of fall into the same pattern for me. You know, they start with, you know, horror and apology, but then they quickly move into excuses about, you know, that's not how he was raised, or he was in the wrong chat room, or that's just boys being boys. You know, he has a lot of black friends, all of that type of stuff. And, and that kind of adult response undermines anything that we're trying to do as a school. And until we have that collective unified voice on that front, we're going to continue to lag in our efforts. So, you know, the more collaborative efforts and collaborative conversations and collaborative voice from our town, our parents, our alumni will determine the effectiveness and the rate at which we're able to progress. And a good model for that frankly is Safe Harbor, which, you know, started very small, but has, has developed into a very comprehensive and productive townwide collaboration. So you know, I'm proud of the progress that we made amplifying student voice and being attentive to their desires and my personal desires to create opportunities for uncomfortable but safe conversations to happen and, and real change to come of it. And I think our student efforts over the past year are evidence of wanting just that. So, you know, we have a long way to go, but you know, I think we've made some, some decent progress and I think we, we're at least trying to continue the conversation so that we can, you know, continue to affect real change.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Really great summary of what you, what you're doing, Brian. And I would say that, you know, the idea of creating voices for people to speak. We also, we do have a safe schools team that has an inclusive cultures team on it that's made up of parents, leaders, students. And a lot of what Brian just said is really kind of the focus. Brian was doing it in his building, but that group is ready to, to move to and to be added to and to have voice help, help guide them as we, as we move as a district. So thank you for that. And John, I know you've only been here a bit, but talk a little bit about some of the thoughts that you've had and work you've done at the middle school.
Thank you. First of all, it's, I, I think it was easy to come into Cohasset and, and have a sense of where people were when it came to inclusivity and cultural competence. I remember during my interview, Alex Sullivan, the principal of Deer Hill, not only asking a question around that, but really engaged in the discussion around it. And it sent the message right away that this, this is important to everybody. And then I can't, you know, tell both Tara and Brian how proud I am to share a roof with their leadership, which has just been amazing. The first conversation I had with Brian Scott, he had told me about the showing the movie, The Hate U Give and the reaction and, and same thing. It just completely impressed me that I had come to the right district. You know, there, there's still work to be done, but it felt great to be part of a group of educators who were excited about doing that work. So I, I thank Brian and Tara for everything they've done and it's, I'm proud of it. I kind of, to dovetail to what Brian had said initially, I think it comes down to building culture. And certainly our goal as well is to create a culture where our kids enjoy being at school, all of our kids enjoy being in school. And I think we've made some progress towards that. I think a big part of that is the ability to listen to student voice. And in looking at data, whether it was the climate survey that Brian had mentioned or Desi's vocal survey, which is given to eighth graders every year. Kate Salas and I did see a trend where students reported that they often didn't have a voice or feel that they didn't have a voice. So this year, one of our goals is really to develop those opportunities, whether it was working closer with the student council and listening to their suggestions about making changes to schedule and lunch and things like that, things that actually made their day much better, but also left them feeling empowered to, to, you know, feeling that they could pop in when they had a problem and speak to Kate or myself or Kate Nelligan, the school counselor, and, and had faith that they were going to be heard. And I think that's sort of where you begin. And, and hopefully we're implicating, you know, leadership and, and that sense that their voice does matter and that we do. It's, it's what's going to make the school better. This year, we had worked on gender identity and raising awareness and making our school a more comfortable place to, for students to attend who are, you know, who identify as a non, a gender, something other than they were born with, their, their biological gender identity. And I think we made great progress. We had invited PFLAG in and gave a professional, like a PD day to it after school for faculty, faculty training. Folks are, are right there and they, they want students to feel as comfortable as possible, but they did report afterwards that it was really good feeling empowered about the issues and knowledgeable about how to, you know, how to, how to navigate something that they might not have grown up having experienced. So it made, I think, a more empathetic faculty. We had also, as Pat said, we're blessed to have Elisa and I think Kate and I worked to really partner with Elisa, whether it was for individual students who live in Boston or working with families to make sure that they felt involved and, and that, you know, they, they know they they were welcome for things like our open house night. Or even this fall, we had great conversations before and after our Halloween dance, our annual Halloween dance. It was reported in the past, Boston kids had not always felt welcome or comfortable in attending. This year I think we did, but we'll continue that conversation just to make sure that every kid feels that, 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 that's their school's dance and that they're comfortable and they're welcome being there. So those sorts of individual moments I think are really powerful. We've also encouraged faculty in the classroom to use student voice to make, you know, decisions and evaluate what they're doing during remote learning. Each of the grade level teams regularly put out surveys to students to sort of garner how it's going and, and see what students needed. And and I think that's important to students and parents to know that their voice does matter and that everybody's voice matters. So those are some of the, the highlights from this year. You know, like the high school, we have included summer reading choices that are around issues of racial equity. And the work that Lisa had done with our faculty book groups has, has developed and I like to say she had almost planted seeds among the faculty and it's, it's borne fruit because over this remote learning period, I had several faculty members reach out asking to create a, a working group for educators, an anti-racism working group for educators. We've met and this isn't a top-down initiative or my idea or Kate's, but it's something that the faculty wants to pursue. We had almost a hundred percent of people attend a voluntary meeting and they were excited to discuss a vision and next steps in, in making that a reality. And really what that is, is an effort to, to have those tough discussion, discussions around racism and, and white privilege to, to raise personal awareness, to, you know, look at our practices, our curriculum and, and change what needs to be done and, and look for activities and efforts to make sure every student feels that it is their school and they're, you know, they, they, they belong there and, and the school belongs to them. I, I'm excited about continuing that work over the summer with the, this group and, and I, I'm excited about the, the fruit that it might bear for next year and, and for, you know, for always for our students.
Thank you, John. That's great. And it's a very, one of the highlights of this year is absolutely the middle school and the teaming that's happening at the middle school. And you can feel that underneath all of this. So thank you for all that. Alex, be a little bit about what's happening at Deer Hill. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. So as Pat mess mentioned, this is my second year as the principal of the Deer Hill and I'm a Southern California transplant and the majority of my educational career was there. And so I think I bring that lens with me to, you know, how I approach this topic that we're addressing. You know, I'm, I'm very used to an extremely diverse student population in a variety of ways. And so I really found myself, you know, facing a new question when I came to Cohasset that I'd never had before, which is, you know, how do you promote diversity and inclusion and anti-racism in a much more homogeneous community? And how do you do that in an authentic way? Kind of going back to what Brian said about making sure that you're not over relying on, on voices and, and really sharing in that responsibility. And so that, you know, to me and with my age group in grades three to five, you know, a lot of that does come through our, our curriculum. And how we can serve as windows and mirrors to our students. And so that's something that we've really addressed and, and tackled in our curriculum. And so literature is definitely a place where we've found a home for, to, to start a lot of these conversations in a way that promotes different perspectives. And that's something that we're looking at throughout. A more recent example was we do a March Madness book brackets every year. And this year the theme was windows and mirrors and all of the literature that students were reading and were responding to was, was diverse and inclusive and, and all different kinds of, of perspectives and from disabilities to cultural to identity type things. And so we are bringing that into the work we're doing with students. Absolutely. And another way is through our school improvement plan that has a specific goal related to diversity and inclusion. And I'm very proud of some of the very actionable items that we were able to take at our level, working in partnership with Elisa. We, you know, created lunch groups with our students from Boston and were able to connect with them multiple times throughout the year with Elisa and, and Atisha Winslow and also our adjustment counselor to have those opportunities for just that safe space and that, that way to connect as a group. And I, I enjoyed those and I was, I was so pleased that we were able to continue that even through remote learning. We had one of our lunches. And so that was another way. I've also been really proud of how students have taken ownership of some of this conversation. We had a group of fourth graders this year under the leadership of a fourth grade teacher, Erica Perrell, establish a committee. And again, this was kind of a grassroots, it came, it was not a top-down. They had formed a teach from the shore committee. And they really began looking critically at, at some of the curriculum that they were learning in school and starting to think of, again, about that idea of different perspective. And through the work of this committee that met consistently throughout the year and also continued to meet remotely once we closed, they wrote letters, they wrote letters from all the way down at my level, all the way up to the governor and all different levels in between and received responses in, in terms of looking to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. You know, so they were very persuasive in that. I think the school committee should be looking, like I said, they just had a remote meeting. So I think they have a packet of their letters and their responses and things that they plan to share with the school committee. So that was important work. Again, that they saw, they saw that they got, they got a response for that, that their voice was heard. Joan Machino was in our building for our Veterans Day assembly and she walked down the hallway and she saw all the letters and she'd received some herself, but then to see more of them and see who else they went to and things. And, and she took time to, to speak to some of the students. And I think that really showed fourth graders that, that they have a voice and they went to every classroom in the building and met with the students and, and kind of shared their platform and their thinking and things and are really starting to promote that kind of that, that change and recognizing that when things need to change, that they have, they have some agency to make that happen. And so that's something that we feel is one example of how, how we promote those kinds of things at our level. As Brian mentioned, through the work he and I and Tara were all, and Emily, so we were all on the, the inclusion committee as part of Safe Schools. And as part of that work, we did begin to coordinate with the diversity club and the Asian culture club. And so we had a couple of different opportunities within our building where the high school students came down, also working with Safe Harbor. So just different ways for students to come into the building and serve as role models, have the older kids come in and connect with our students and really promote that diversity and that opportunity for voice and identity. I also followed in the wake of John Mills, I heard how successful his presentation was from PFLAG. And so we coordinated that as well at the Deer Hill, just based on, on the success at the middle school. It ended up being a remote presentation, but we did do a staff professional development with that. And what I'm so pleased about is when you see, when you do something like that and then you see how it affects the change, you know, you look, when I receive emails now from staff members, I see that pronouns are listed and that there's, you know, hyperlinks to, to ask me why it's important to, you know, share my pronouns and things like that. And so seeing those really actionable steps taken as a result of the conversations we're having and the professional development and they're just building that awareness has been really, really nice, nice to see throughout. I'm thinking that's, you know, kind of an overview of, of what we're doing here at the Deer Hill. We're in that in-between grade and we really do feel that it's never too young to have these important conversations. I do encourage teachers to go there, you know, to, to, to go into that little bit of that risk zone and, and, and it's okay to, to say, I don't know. And, and let's, let's talk about this or let's figure out how, you know, we can, how we can start to recognize that something's wrong or not right and make some of the changes we need to see.
Thank you, Alex. And Lisa, starting with our youngest, youngest of kids.
Thank you. And thank you for having us here this evening. One of the things, listening from, from Brian Scott's presentation from the seniors down to Alex talking about the three through fifth graders, one of the things that I keep going back to is oftentimes you'll see whether it's a picture or a quote, and you see two very small young children, maybe of different races, different religions or, or different colors. And you see them there and they're very innocent. That's where it starts. Do we come forward at, what age do we come forward and start to have judgments in our, our own thoughts? And where do those come from? Do they come from our families? Do they come from school? Do they come from what we see on TV? One of the best things that I've seen probably in quite a while, and it just happened to be on TV two Saturdays ago, was the Sesame Street race, anti-race talk that was through CNN. And it really hit home for me just because obviously each one of the principals here, the grades that we work with are very, very important and we're experts in the field of the age that we work with. But looking at when Brian has a senior that's graduating, what did they get? What did that senior get if they were all the way through Cohasset schools? What did they get when they were in first grade? What did they get in kindergarten? And then as they progressed over to Deer Hill, what was cemented a little bit more when they got to middle school, which is a very tough age. How are they starting to feel about themselves and about how they handle what's going on? I think the program that CNN had had put on did a fabulous job just asking the kid, the little ones, what are your questions? And taking away from that and then thinking about tonight and talking and listening to what everybody's having to say as far as what we do in Cohasset. Brought me to a couple of different ideas. One is our thoughts. One is much like Alex had said, I'm, this is my fourth year here. So I'm the old lady in the group. The, which you didn't all need to know that, but I will say it. The other is the different experiences I've had in different school districts. Before I was here in Cohasset, I was in Stoughton, Mass. And I will tell anybody that asks, I learned as to my downfalls about how I felt about other things. I really thought I was very open. I thought I would, I knew a lot about different cultures. You put yourself in a situation where you are the only person. That may be not of color or the only person that doesn't have the same religion as everybody else and you quickly learn. What you don't know. Yeah, a very quick example about where where I was before. Was a very bilingual school and my secretary had to translate for me 75% of the parents that came in. So I was at her. I was at her mercy when she was translating because I didn't understand what she was saying to the parents and then she would translate it back to me. That was probably the biggest lesson I've learned in life across the board. That when something is different and you are not the the person that represents the entire population, it makes it very difficult. And you rely on what others are thinking. I was very fortunate. That went along, what went along with that lesson was kindness. And that's what I've been trying to bring to the Oz Good. And working with small young students from the four year olds up to the eight years year olds when they leave kindness in, I know Brian's. A couple of times stated the quote that I've said, and again, I didn't coin it, but it's who we are and what we do. You need to be kind. You need to think about what you're saying. And I'm very fortunate, as I've said several times before, the staff that I have at and I am very honored to work with at the Oz Good. They think about what is this, what does this look like? We're teaching children when they come in the age of four and five. They've been home when they come to school. What do they, what do we want to work on? We want to work on sharing kind words. Being generous to everyone, being inclusive. The one book, one school. When I started in Cohasset, I brought that idea along with me that are in other districts. And last summer's one book, one school was strictly no elephants. And the gist of the story is it's about inclusion and acceptance. And the gist of the story is little boy has a pet elephant. He's not allowed to go to the dog park. He's not allowed to go because he doesn't have a dog. He is an elephant. So he and his friends get together. And they now have a park where you can bring any animal you want and any animal will have fun. That was the book that was required, suggested last summer that everybody read it at home. And then when we got back to school, we do activities with them. The teachers talk about inclusiveness. So it starts right in the beginning. This year we haven't chose our book just yet because of where we are as far as. The learning and the the COVID situation that happened. We want to make sure that we choose a book. That and we have activities that go with what we want to step forward with for next year. But just looking at the items of kindness, caring, inclusiveness. I know it's been mentioned before, but I'm very fortunate that Safe Harbors started reaching out to the younger grades. They had reached out with Alex last year and they did items. They did items this year. This year they came down with the high school students, a few middle school students. And they did a presentation on Samantha the Skunk, which was about teaching children not to take medication that's not theirs. Working with Brian in Safe Harvest next year is just having them come talk to us about. Cultural differences, being accepting. And again, bottom line is just being kind. So we're going to be working continuously with both groups. The high school, hopefully the middle school can come down and work with the students and then Safe Harbor. The last thing that I'd like to mention is I've been from day one. Standing class and I've been very fortunate that Alisa's office, Alisa and Atisha have their office at. The Oz Good. I'm also very fortunate that we are the last bus stop. So in the morning, we start right away with a teacher and Alicia. 90% of the time being in the building, helping us in the classrooms, making sure that we are working with everybody. And we're not separate from, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. We have no longer said the Metco students, that the students from Boston. And that to me was a huge step because it's where the students from Cohasset, where the students from Boston, it's where you live. The last piece that I was very fortunate to have see, have begun, have seen begun. Is the responsive classroom. In the responsive classroom curriculum that we have, again, starting with our youngest students and going up through Deer Hill. The general term or the thought behind responsive classroom is helping students become socially, emotionally aware and skilled. So as we don't necessarily have assemblies or we may not have gatherings where we're talking about. Specific issues that are going on, we do try and weave it throughout our day. And again. I give a lot of kudos to the staff because they do do that and it makes it really nice when we're talking about kindness. And everybody should just take a look at where we are, but also look at how you're saying something. So I think that's that covers our three, four year olds, five, six year olds, seven and eight year olds.
Wonderful. Thank you, Lisa. And I should mention, you know, Lisa talked about our mindset as well. It's very important that our leadership team receives professional development and we have, we're working with Dr. Khaleesi Warneum. Maybe Alisa will talk about that, but we're, we need to keep our game moving up and learning more about cultural competency. And how it can inspire our staff to to do that as well. And some of us had the opportunity of working with Manny. As a Fernandez, was that Manny's name from from Cambridge? And he he did a a great workshop for our our leadership team as well a few years ago. So Alisa and Leslie, what you want to add, we've we've definitely talked a lot about what we're doing, but I know there's. A lot going on right now and a lot we want to do going forward to make sure that we encourage discourse, which is very important. So Alisa, I'll leave it to you and Leslie, you can jump in when you feel you should.
So again, thank you all for inviting me. Hello again. Yeah, I think Cohasset is, I used to say we are stepping our toe into the water. I think right now we're probably. At the foot part. There is a lot of stuff that's going on and thankfully, we now have a leadership team in place. That really supports cultural sensitivity, really supports diversity. I think for a few years, that wasn't the case. And I think if it doesn't start from the top, it doesn't matter what I do as, you know, the lone black administrator in the district. It doesn't matter what I say or, you know, I need to have the support of everybody for us to really be able to move the agenda forward. And so I'm so appreciative of the fact that we do have a leadership team. Who is working together to truly support this vision and, you know, it's in a strategic plan. When you go through the buildings, you know, to hear people talking about the issues that we're discussing is is so important because. As I can say, I've been here for 19 years and I think this is the first time these last couple of years that we've really taken a good hard look. At our atmosphere and truly making the changes that we need to make so that everybody does feel inclusive, that everybody does feel as though they have a voice. And so it did start for me with writing the grant to the CEF to get an all day professional development. And I knew the professional development wasn't going to happen until March. Thus, the reason why I started the book club, because I thought if we could start the conversation. You know, it would just get us that much further ahead when the actual day came. It wouldn't just be me having a conversation with individuals. But there would be, you know, a group of staff who also had had these conversations as well. And I understand it's very difficult when you're talking about issues of race, issues of inclusiveness. You know, it's very, it is uncomfortable. I'm not going to lie. It's uncomfortable. But at the same time, if we don't take the time to have these uncomfortable conversations, we're not going to be able to make the growth and to make the steps forward that we need to. Which is so important. I heard somebody mention that Cohasset students are in a bubble. And so often I've heard that and it's true. If all you know is Cohasset. Once you leave Cohasset, there's a whole nother world out there of people who don't look like you, who don't. Pray like you, who don't, you know, eat the same kind of food. You eat all kinds of differences and we really need to be exposed to all of that. So that we really can, you know, begin to learn and understand each other. And so with that said, we do have some things that are going to happen in the summer that we presented. There's a lot of resources that are on the website. It's unfortunate that we that we are highlighting this even more so now because of the events that have happened. But there are a lot of resources, you know, I was so appreciative to see the whole Cohasset community come together at the vigil. A week or so ago, to see the whole town come out and recognize that this is an issue that we really need to to address. Even three years ago, when I came before the MLK breakfast. And I asked, you know, let's start the diversity committee again in the town and to see individuals step up. And begin to join the diversity committee so that we can have these conversations on a regular basis. Are we, you know, where I want us to be? Absolutely not. We do have a long way to go. We have a lot of growth that needs to happen. But thank God that we're all walking in the same direction. And so let's just keep that momentum going. So for the summer, a friend of mine, actually she's a parent of mine, but she actually happens to be a Boston public school teacher. Sent something called Justice in June. And so what it entailed was each day for the month of June, there was an article. Or video or some kind of an activity that had to do with social justice issues. And so after looking at that, you know, Pat made a great suggestion. Why don't we make this a part of professional development for the summer? Something that really keeps us going. And so that's what we've done. I've had quite a few teachers who have, you know, contacted me. And I'm sure they've contacted Leslie as well to say that they're going to do it. It doesn't necessarily have to be June, although that was the title of it. It can be for the whole summer and then there are work products that we expect to receive at the end. Even with the book club, even having the book, you know, discussing the books themselves, you know, the final thought was, okay. Now that we've had these kind of conversations, what are you going to do as a teacher? To change your curriculum, to change your lesson plan, to change, you know, how you truly engage in the classroom. And so those were some of the the questions that needed to be asked from a personal perspective from the teachers themselves. And so it's nice to hear John say, you know, that there's a group of teachers who now want to start an anti racism group. I mean, you know, thank God the seeds were planted, but it's even better that the seeds are going to continue to grow because people are taking the initiative. And they're putting, they're putting their words in action. And that's what we need to happen is to continue to put words in action. Some other things that I've discussed with both Leslie and Patrick is, I know it's been difficult, high, trying to hire. Individuals of color in any capacity across the district. And so now that we've gotten a hold of and have been able to contract with the individuals who are going to be doing the workshops. For the cultural, for the cultural proficiency day, I think it's important that we then, I can ask a few of them to do, you know, to be like. A teacher in residence in a particular class or, you know, similar to like an artist in residence, have them come in and do some seminar classes. With our students, that all of the individuals who will be, who will be doing the workshops are educators or former educators. You know, there's assistant superintendents, principals, all, you know, they run the gamut. And so I think to be able to bring them in. And to have some social justice conversations directly with the students and to, you know, have them over a period of time. I think that would be an awesome way to begin to introduce more teachers, more educators of color into the district. Since we haven't been successful as far as hiring them. So it's just really beginning to think outside the box. You know, what are some of the things that we can do? You know, is there, you know, I know a math teacher, maybe he'll come in and co teach. With a math, you know, another math teacher. Who knows? I mean, there are so many things that we can do if we just begin to think outside the box and then begin to put those things in action. So those are just a few of the things, believe you me, I have a a whole treasure trove full of ideas. And thankfully I have Leslie, who is so good at taking all of my ideas and really formulating what they really look like when you put them on paper. Because I think sometimes it's it's us creative ones. We have all the creativity, but we might not necessarily have all the nuts and bolts that go together. So it's, so like I said, it's really important that you have a leadership team that not only works well together. But is working really well together on, you know, really building the capacity that we need in order to push us forward. In regards to cultural diversity, in regards to cultural responsiveness, just giving students a voice is so important. And so, I mean, I'm excited about what's to happen. I I think I said, I think it was last year when Pat introduced us to the community and. We were all in the library and everybody got to speak and and kind of introduced themselves as a member of the leadership team. And I said. I said then that, you know, I was so excited to still be a part of Cohasset. If you had asked me that a few years ago, it might not have been the same thing, but I can truly say now that I'm excited to be a part of all the work that is going forward. I can't wait to see, you know, the fruit that continues to, you know, be born. As we continue this journey together. So Leslie, I know I've talked a lot, so I'll hush for a minute and you can go on.
You did such a great job, Lisa. There isn't really much more for me to say except that. I I think one of the most important things that that everyone has said is that this is not a flash. Moment, this is a time for us to create sustainability. And it can't just be in reaction to one event or two events. This actually has to be who we are. And we have to build it in all around our curriculum and and all the things that we do around school. And. So everyone here has talked about that and discussed all the things that they're doing and will continue to do. I have absolutely enjoyed my partnership with Lisa. I love when we meet and we we chat about our grandbabies. Then we get into the business of what's important for us to do here at school. So. I can't say enough that that partnership has been wonderful for me and and eye opening for me also. So I value Lisa's openness and honesty and not afraid to state. What she thinks is important and that's been extremely helpful. So we will continue as we look at our curriculum to make sure that our. Curriculum is a voice of many, not just one voice. Make sure that our materials that we use come from different places, not just one place or one voice. And that will be just weaved into what we do. So everyone else did such a great job. I really didn't have too much more to say other than we're just going to keep on doing what we're doing and we're going to keep on growing it.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the beauty of this is you, we, we're learning as we're going as well, you know, we're we're educators, but we recognize in education that. It's a continuous learning with us. So I want to thank the leadership for being here. And I want to just make sure the public knows, and this is why I asked to do this, how committed we are. And how much we appreciate those who want to add voice as well, because this is clearly a, something we have to focus on as a society. And our schools are a major part of the the formation of our students, but I know that it it also happens at home. So we we definitely want to help and include that voice as we move forward. So. Thank you, committee, for letting letting us do that. And thank you, leadership team, for being here. I don't know if there's any questions. For the chair, from the chair or the committee or any anyone else.
Anyone from the committee have anything? Ashley?
Um, I was wondering. I was wondering if there might be an opportunity, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, and I would leave it to you to decide. Whether anyone would be willing to share any sort of tidbits from the Metco and Student Council discussion? Like, I don't, I don't need them now. I just feel like it would be valuable for us to know if that's appropriate. And I would leave it totally up to you whether it is or not.
Well, first of all, maybe, I don't know, at least did you speak or Brian or anyone speak specifically about what it was? I just want to make sure folks at home know what Ashley is referring to.
I'm not sure, but on this past Monday, the Boston students and the Student Council. Students came together along with Brian, Tara and myself. And two facilitators, two facilitators from the Metco program. And we had a, we had a discussion. A very real discussion about what's going on. And so we started the conversation together. And so we started the conversation together, you know, getting some ground rules, setting some norms. Asking, having some questions asked to, to us from the facilitators. And then we broke into two affinity groups. So the students of color went into one affinity group and the white students went into a second. And then at the end, we all came back to kind of discuss what our feelings were, what we thought. Asked questions, where we wanted to go, et cetera. And it was in, it was a really amazing time. Because I don't think in all the time that I've been here that we've ever had that kind of a discussion. And so it was nice to, 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 to come together. And I, and, and if I remember correctly, it was the students who wanted it. And so I just helped to facilitate it, you know, the adults in the room just helped to facilitate it to bring it together. Cause I think when you're faced with a situation that you're just uncomfortable about and you just don't know what to say. You know, the best thing to do is to educate yourself. And I thought it was so courageous of students who really felt like they didn't know what to do, how to say it. And, and, and how to address a lot of what's going on, but to be able to ask those questions. And, you know, to risk, you know, talking about their feelings and their emotions and to be able to come together in that type of a forum. We are planning on doing some additional get togethers over the summer. Because one of the things that came out of that is that they don't want this to die, just like we don't. And so they wanna continue to have those conversations. And so we have a couple of things that we're thinking of doing. And so hopefully we'll be able to put it together and, and, you know, you'll be able to hear it from the students themselves. As you come in contact with them throughout the community. And they can, you'll begin to hear the conversations that are being said. You'll begin to hear, you know, what they wanna do and how they wanna do it. And the changes that they wanna see, but it will come from the students. It won't be adult directed. Based on the conversations that we are having together. So I don't know if Brian or Tara wanna add to that.
That's great. Ashley, to, to answer the question about, you know, what the conversations were like. There was a lot of, you know, guidelines and structure upfront, which was nice. And it was really facilitated by two people from Metco. So Tara and I and Mary Beth Reardon, who was a student council, she's the student council advisor, we weren't in the breakout sessions. So we didn't hear those conversations. And I think, you know, there's some healthiness to that. Because they were able to work with the Metco person to really voice what they wanted to do. And, you know, to my point of getting the student voice out there, I, I think it's good for them to talk amongst themselves and come back and say. Alright, so here's what we said, here's what we heard. Now, now let's go have that conversation about what we can do. So, you know, again, there's a lot of trust involved in, you know, letting the kids speak their minds. Helping them, you know, through what they decide they wanna do, you know, but they did initiate all of it. So that was, that's encouraging.
I think the other two big takeaways from that group, what we could hear loud and clear from the kids. Was that they want, you know, more teacher education for sure. To be within their daily cloth of their learning. So as we had already prepared, Leslie and Elisa, obviously in, in March, we're supposed to start with that. So I think we are, you know, right where we need to be for the start of that. And the second one was really looking at the diversity club and how they can play a bigger, you know, more impactful role. Within the school walls. So I think that's something else that we will definitely have to look at. And, you know, potentially look at an actual curriculum or things like that, that the kids could follow. To get more out of the actual diversity club as well.
And I'd also add that folks should know out there that this isn't a one off. Like, it's not like that was the only discussion where that was just with our, our, with a group of students. We're gonna do it with more students, where we need to be inclusive with these conversations. We need to add all kinds of voice. This is just a step. It was a step. And it was a good one.
I think with a smaller group, kids were more willing to take a risk. So we tried to keep it to the 20, 25 students. So that way at least they could have a foundation somewhere where it wouldn't, you know, snowball. And, and I think our kids did an absolutely amazing job of listening and learning.
Other questions from the committee?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
My first question is to Mrs. Gettens Carl. I'm wondering if, I just don't know this, whether it's possible to increase our participation, Cohasset's participation in the Metco program?
I believe that's a school committee decision. Like, if you, you mean, increase the number of students?
I do. I'm just wondering if it's possible.
I think it is possible, but like I said, that's a school committee conversation.
Sure. And that's, I'm just, so if, if it is possible, do you think that that would be a valuable way of addressing? You know, issues of racism and equality in the district?
I think it is a valuable way. You know, the more, the more individuals who are similar to you in any setting, regardless of what the similarity is. You always feel a lot more comfortable and, you know, you, you feel that affinity. So I, it would, you know, I think it would help. But I, but again, I think you also need to have other teachers, other educators, other people around. The district who also are part of those different groups as well. So it's not, it's not just the students, but it's also having the adults as well. So.
No, agreed. I was just, I was just, but just focusing, just sort of honing in on the Metco program itself. I completely agree with your thoughts, especially people in positions of authority. It would be good to have people of varying backgrounds as well as students. But, but that was helpful. Thank, thank you.
Right. I mean, one of the, one of the original, but less stated goals of the Metco program was that. By having students of color in the various districts, that, you know, they would then move into those various districts. And so they would become more diverse, those districts themselves would become more diverse in that way. Over the 50 plus year history, that hasn't quite happened. There have been a few districts that actually are no longer part of the Metco program. Because those actual districts have become a lot more diverse. But that was one of the goals of the program. And still, that hasn't happened for a variety of reasons.
Okay, that's interesting. Thank you very much. My second question is to Dr. Skowens and Dr. Sullivan. First, I guess initially I would ask, is there currently, and I guess Principal Scott as well. Is there currently an elective in the high school offered that centers around racism and discrimination? I guess, starting first with the United States throughout time, throughout history?
Brian, you wanna take that? I know it's touched on.
Yeah, I mean, we have eliminated, we don't have any electives that address that topic specifically. You know, we do have electives in the social studies departments that, you know, like global studies, for example, Holocaust. That address some of the overarching issues. And we need to take a look at some of the core courses. And kind of look at like the American history classes and the American Lit classes and build some avenues into those. But we're, we're, you know, if we could add electives, we would, you know, we just, and maybe we need to change the ones we have. But we don't have anything that looks at that specifically.
Well, I, I think to, to a point that Mrs. Collier has made in the past. I think that certainly incorporating in, in any world or American history courses. Incorporating lessons that, that focus on figures of, you know. Female figures, but also figures of, of varying backgrounds. That, that would help. That's, that's not, that is not my idea, that's Mrs. Collier's idea, that she's, she's voiced in the past. But, but what I'm advocating for, you mentioned the Holocaust course, this, this is the reason why I'm thinking of it. When I was in college, I took a Holocaust course, which was reserved for seniors. And it was a, it was a very unapologetic, disconcerting and troublesome course. It was very real and it, and it was very thought provoking. And I think it, it confronted students with a very harsh reality of something that was terrible that happened. And the reasons why it happened and how something like that can be avoided in the future. And I think that that scenario can be sort of equated or analogized to this, the issues of racism and discrimination. Not only based on race, but based on gender and perhaps religion, sexual orientation, whatever, you know, it may be. That differentiates one human being from the next. But I think if we actually had a fairly, you know, like I said, sort of unapologetic course. That really confronts students in a very harsh way about the realities of, of some terrible things that have happened over time. And how maybe those things can be avoided by, by people changing their perspectives. In particular, young people who we will be teaching this to, hopefully. I, I just think there could be some value in that. And I guess, so I guess, you know, you answered my initial question, does it, does one exist? You know, it doesn't sound like one sole course exists on that. And so my second question for Dr. Skowens, Dr. Sullivan, is it possible, there may be, I don't know, limitations or hurdles or challenges. That we may or may not be able to overcome, but is it possible to consider something of that nature?
If I could just jump in real quick, just to follow up on your, your initial question, I don't think anybody in the history department would disagree. And, you know, there are certainly pockets with historical figures like Malcolm X and women. And, you know, having been in most of the classrooms on a regular basis, they really take that, that perspective lens seriously. But to an earlier point, the problem that we have is that voice from the, the student body is hard to exist. So, you know, take a global studies course, for example, we've tried to invite in members of the community that are Middle Eastern. That have a little bit of a different bent, part of the Jewish community that has a little bit of a different experience with some of the Holocaust stuff. And, and have the kids hear the voices from those people themselves. And that's where some of the faculty cultural competency training comes in. And that's where I think to Elisa's point, inviting other scholars in, inviting other voices in so that the kids can hear it from themselves. Because it doesn't, you know, and I don't know what your experience was. It doesn't always have the same impact talking about race as an all white class, you know. And, and that's where I think our biggest struggles are. And that's where I think we need a lot of professional development. But, you know, I just kind of wanted to add that piece in that, that that's definitely on people's minds. We're trying to figure out how to solve that problem.
Leslie, you wanna?
Yeah, thank you. And I, I absolutely agree. I think, you know, being able to offer a course. That's developmentally appropriate for our students is, is absolutely something we'd love to do. But at the same time, we have to be really cautious, sure that we're actually looking at all our curriculum across the board. And, and it should be all weaved in together. So, because it's all about teaching our kids through literature, through, you know, reading of history and all of those pieces. And then having experts come in and talk about it also. So I agree with what Brian's talking about too, having, and that Elisa talked about, bringing some people in that are. That, that have a different experience or come from a different cultural background to be part of what we're teaching our kids. I think one of the things that was interesting when we were looking at our math program. What part of the rubric was around looking at biases and looking at the multicultural pieces that exist within the, within the programs. And that was, that was a topic of conversation that we needed to make sure that that was represented. Or if it's not, how are we going to make sure it is? Math is a little bit different because you're dealing with numbers. But we wanna talk about what are the word problems that are being used? What are the contexts from what they're in? What are the names? What are, what are all the pieces that are involved? What do the pictures look like? So, so that's gotta be something that we're looking at through everything we do when we're looking at our curriculum. So I think it's, it's probably even bigger than what you're talking about, Craig. Not just the one class, but really looking at our curriculum as a whole to make sure that we are being, that it is inclusive and that it is diverse. And that multiple voices are represented, no matter what it is. So there's, you know, if we're just looking at literature at the high school level, there's context for which, when stories were written. And it would be a disservice of us not to be having discussions about the context or the time within that, right, that, that piece was written. And how does that impact us now? What can we learn from that now? Something written in 1929, there are pieces in there that are probably pretty relevant for our discussion now. So.
Can I just offer to, just an example to your point? Leslie is, you know, respectfully Craig, I, I had some of those same collegiate experiences. And as a former social studies teacher, I tend to think about, you know, these opportunities to talk and discuss things like civil rights. And the historical trends that have produced the world that we have now. I think of it in, in social studies terms, but really. For instance, the, at the middle school, there's some great examples of, through project based learning. Interdisciplinary approaches to studying these really complex problems. And a great example, we talked about it earlier in the year, when you had invited me, was our seventh grade team's project based learning. Unit around the book Hidden Figures, which studies civil rights. And civil rights isn't in the seventh grade social studies curriculum. It's not even in the middle school social studies curriculum. But by that choice as a reading material, allowed all the subjects to sort of, you know, delve into the question of. Why are there some figures who've done great things, but for whatever reason, the color of their skin, their religion, their gender, they've been hidden. And they weren't part of the story that was written about a certain time period. In the sixth grade PBL unit around the boy that harnessed the wind is about creativity and STEM. But really, it's about Africa. It's about a young man without opportunities, you know, value, finding education. And in that unit, we connected through Skype and, and the, the kids got to engage, interact. You know, virtually through a Skype meeting with the author who was in Africa at the time. So it's, you know, I think it's important to Leslie's point to think beyond just the social studies. Teachers having to bear this burden. It's, it's really all educators. And there's some great things going on with, through collaborative efforts of our teachers. So I'm sorry to jump in like that, but I, I just thought it was something that we talked about recently.
That's fine, John. That was helpful, Dr. Mills. I, I, I think I, I didn't make myself clear. I'm talking about both. I'm not disagreeing that, that sort of encompassing, you're sort of involving all this and integrating, incorporating all this in the general curriculum. Is a good idea. I'm saying, in addition to that, would it be possible and/or is it a good idea? Based on all, you know, what are your educator, you know, opinions, your insights? Would that be a valuable thing to do to add a course in addition to do what, doing what you're all saying? Or is what you're all saying the way to approach the issue? And, and the only way to approach the issue is not damaging or detrimental to have a course?
Yeah, well taken. I mean, I think, I think we all can, would answer probably both if we could do it. And I think that's, but those are the discerning, that's what we have to decide. How are we gonna weave in topics that should be explored more deeply? Into our curriculum, digital course or through our curriculum, through project based learning, probably all the, all the above. I do, we do have one question from the public asking about local African American students, black students. Being invited to that initial conversation that happened on the student council. The way I understood that student council meeting, it was pretty much a test run of a conversation and some dialogue on Zoom. And we, that's like just, I, I mean, from my view, that's just a pebble in the, in the pond. I mean, we have to have many, many, many conversations. And we had those, some of those conversations when, I know when Brian and team did the hate you give. But I can't speak to the invite structure of that meeting, but we, we're gonna have many, many more.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So I think from my perspective, and that's just my perspective. I am extremely, I, I have been happy and grateful. For all of the things that have been implemented thus far. And I have considered us lucky to be in a place where leadership is endorsing and encouraging. This movement toward a focus on inclusion. What would be helpful for me is to know if there are concrete things that we are committing to doing now, moving forward. To actually address this head on. I understand that we've done things and we're gonna keep doing things. My question is, are there, like, how are we going to, what is the timeline? What is the process?
So I can talk to that a little bit. Ashley, as you know, we're starting our, we're in our last year coming up. Plan and we're starting our strategic plan development in really the summer. We're, we're going to be working on it. We've already contracted with a team that's going to help lead us through that. And it's just the team is going to help us collect voice and move it forward. So clearly, as a leadership team, when we think about our professional development and as a district, we think about our professional development. And we think about keeping, keeping what we had in place for the last year, the second to last year of a strategic plan. And moving that forward to the next strategic plan, we need to outline some concrete steps in that. We, we had some up until this year. We don't, and going into next year a little bit, we don't have our strategic plan set yet because we're developing it. So that's our work and that's what's ahead of us. And we knew that. And this is just more, more punctuation to, to make sure we do that. There's a question. That's where we are. That's where we are, Ashley. So we're, you know, we had, we had a strategic plan that had cultural competency as part of it. We're moving to another strategic plan and we can't move fast enough to get into that, to plan the steps that will, that, that will lead us to, you know, to make sure these things are implemented within the district. And you can, you can hopefully feel the passion and see the, the local planning that's happening. But to bring that all together under a pillar of a strategic plan is something that is, is the work ahead of us. That's good. Other thoughts? I know this was long, but I think it's a really important discussion and something that, you know, we need to continue to have. Okay, great. All right. Well, I want to let the leadership team go now, but thank you for your support. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, committee, for supporting these efforts. And thank you to the public for continuing the discourse and for enriching it. You know, as we do create a strategic plan that's going to encompass all this and move us forward to, to make sure that, you know, we realize we want to realize, which is a more inclusive culture, more diverse texts, a higher degree of discourse around racial tension and racism, a bigger and more full population of, of teachers and educators of color. And we want to work together to do that with the community. So very excited about the opportunities ahead of us and we understand the responsibility. So thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They hear a lot of pings as they leave. The good news, and I, I do thank you, committee, for indulging us in that, because I think it's a really crucial conversation. But the, the good news is the next steps in my, in the superintendent report, I think I can go over very quickly. You've all seen the, what I hope is a comprehensive.
Quick question. Who is monitoring questions and answers on Zoom?
Well, I, I have it and I have one question. And I think I answered about, it was what about the local African-American students?
I see the questions as well, Ashley.
Okay, all right. So we're addressing them? Okay.
Yeah. Oh, if they're, yeah, please.
Thank you. And, and Patrick, before you move on, I neglected at the beginning, but if anyone in the public wants to participate and come in on the Zoom chat and ask a question, please, like you would in a public, you know, an in-person meeting, put your name and address, please, for the record. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. So then the next part of our, of the superintendent's report was to talk about the planning for the fall reentry, which I think the whole committee has received a full report of our team, the, the subcommittees we have planned. I think they're, they're very comprehensive. I hope you found them representative of all stakeholders. And I know this team received the timeline as well. The survey, we've been working, we have a family communication and committee, subcommittee that we're working with. They're actually liaisons of the, of the PSO. And we've been back and forth on when to do the survey or when to get information out to parents. And what we've determined is that we want to see the initial guidance that comes our way. So we can really make sure that we're asking parents the right questions. And not only about, you know, what happened with our remote learning, what we can do better about remote learning, but other issues as well. Social, emotional concerns and concerns that they may have with any plan that is prescribed for us. So we found that very important. And I, you know, really want to thank the PSO liaisons for advocating for not having multiple surveys that could confuse and muddy the issues that we do it appropriately and properly. And we'll hope to get that out next week, if indeed the guidance comes forth this week, which I'm hoping it will. But again, we're moving towards Thursday right now and we don't have the guidance. So it's a, it's a tough situation. But I wanted to make sure you, you had a chance to ask any questions you might want to ask about those teams. And I have been in contact with the, with those teams and told them about our schedule. We have July 9th, this sort of a planning for the, the leadership team, the steering team to look at the, the guidance and to create questions and templates that will be filling in with the, with the subcommittees on the 10th. So that's our big plan. And we know that we might be coming back. And it depends on how, how prescriptive the guidance is. And we certainly need to have input from staff, from parents, from the committee. And we have a structure that's going to do all of that. So I feel very well-prepared for whatever's coming our way. I'm just very anxious for it to come our way. So we can create some, some dialogue around it. Just wanted to put it out there, if you had any questions. Okay. All right. So the, the next, the next part was about the elementary math curriculum. And I'll let Dr. Collins talk about that.
Great. Thank you so much. First, I want to thank the town for voting to support us financially to be able to purchase this program. So thank you so much. I know that just happened last night. And also want to thank the committee upfront. Also, the teachers and the administrators were wonderful about coming together and really facilitating how we would move forward and looking at how we would adopt a program. And it was in place before I got here last July. But this group worked really hard. And so I just wanted to recognize Julia DeWall, Gina Steele, Stephanie DeLeo, Marcia Campbell, Jennifer Clark, Susie Corcom, Julie Bradford, Trish Baldwin, Chrissy Thonay, and Elisa Farrell and Alex Sullivan. This was a wonderful group to work with. And it was no easy task when we went into remote learning. So it was a, it was a little bit more challenging because we obviously weren't in the classroom. But we did look at two programs that we decided to pilot during the year. That was Investigations and also Bridges. All the teachers were instructed to teach at least a unit of each. Some of that got a little bit interrupted because of remote learning. So we had to pivot a little bit and figure out different ways. But they all used a specific rubric so that everything was evaluated with the same lens. And when we, once teachers had an opportunity to really look and work with the rubric and look at the programs, they came together and did a grade level rubric and came to a determination as to which, you know, looking at each program. Then we pulled those together and looked at what the, the information was that was on the rubrics. The nice thing is that both programs fell into the meets criteria in a very strong way. So that, they did such a good job just picking two programs from the beginning. So that was really nice. The one thing that we noticed is that in several areas, the Bridges program exceeded what the criteria was. And so that was kind of the deciding factor as to which program we would choose. So it was truly the voices of the teachers. We spent time last week going over the rubrics and teachers giving their feedback from when we met as a, as a math committee. And it was really helpful just to kind of talk through some of the things, talk through some of the questions we had about the programming. And so they did such a great job. So we've come together and Bridges is the program that has been chosen. And I'm working with the company right now in order to get a, an accurate quote so that we can move forward and get this ordered so it can get into their hands. So I think there's a lot of excitement at the elementary level. They've been really wanting a program. They, they were so excited to try them both. And they're both, I will say, very investigative, hands-on math programs. And they really push for math discourse, which is what we want for our kids. We want them to understand numbers. We want them to understand at a deeper level. And Bridges is certainly going to take them there. So it will be really fun to implement in the fall. So any questions?
I just, what, could you talk a little, speak a little to the homeschool component of Bridges?
That was a big question. Thank you, Jennifer. That was a really big question, obviously in light of what we've just gone through. And so that was part of the rubric as it was originally anyway. So that discussion was important. But the homeschool piece, in particular with Bridges, there are lots of opportunities for families. There's great notifications that teachers can use. But in addition, there's a variety of different types of home experiences for children. So if you wanted to print something out, you can print it out. If you wanted to play a game online, you can play a game online or you can print the game out. There are lots of interactive pieces and lots and lots of opportunities for kids to, to use technology if they wanted to, or they didn't have to use technology. But there was all a very, very friendly and intuitive kind of computer component of it. So that was a really nice piece. And I think that that was important for, for the staff, for them to feel that they had a wealth of things that parents could choose from, or that they made that nice homeschool connection.
Great. Questions from the team? Other questions?
No, I'd love to, you know, maybe mid-year, come back and hear how it's going. Absolutely. I think it will be fun to, it'll be fun for you to see how it's going. So, yeah, I think that would be wonderful. So we will be very happy to come back and bring some teachers and maybe we'll do some math together. It's kind of fun. I love math.
All right. Okay. So then just the last thing, you know, obviously it's a major thing and Michael will talk about it. But the, obviously the town approved our budget, which is amazing. We're very, very excited about that. And I believe Michael is up next in your section.
Hi, thanks, Patrick. So it's not quite under this agenda item, but yeah, I can just, you know, we were pleased to see the school budget being approved as part of the town's overall operating budget. So that essentially was a, the budget we had most recently approved, which included a small reduction in order to reflect the needs of the town in responding to coronavirus and the reduced revenue. But we, and which we were able to afford through a couple of additional retirements, which had helped deliver some savings. So that does allow us to go ahead with some of the investments in social, emotional learning through the adjustment counselors. It allows an additional adjustment counselor at the middle high school, also an additional .5 FD custodian at the middle high school. And also expanding our kindergarten section, number of kindergarten sections to respond, to reflect the increase in enrollment and a number of other items which we identified as part of the highest criteria needs. So that was great news. And there was also a number of items approved as part of the capital plan that the, the town had put forward and was approved last night as well. So it's good stuff and a lot achieves and we'll be moving forward with that. So that's great. And then the other item was a, just, just to give you kind of an update on where we're going with the end of the year and how it's looking. I feel a little sheepish because originally we'd planned to maybe be having you vote on our final transfers. But I think just there's so much in flux right at the moment. We're gonna put off until the next meeting. So we can find, so we can get a better picture of our, you know, final bills that are coming in, a couple of decisions that still have to be made about some of our vendors and how we pay them during the coronavirus closures. So if, as long as everybody's happy with that, we're gonna put that off to our next meeting. But just broadly speaking, where we are, we are still, as advised at the previous meetings, we are coming in with a bit of a surplus. Naturally, coming because of, I mean, supplies expenditure is down and that's due in large part to the closures. The utilities, you know, we've seen a big reduction in heating and electricity over the last couple of years and that's continued. And then the school closures as well has sort of widened the gap between what we budgeted and what our actual expenditure is. So that's also helped us. And then we had done some pre-pays, a special ed tuition last year, at the end of last year. And so that's helped us keep our expenditure down for this year. And we'll allow those to do our similar level of pre-pays good into next year. So we will go into the end of the year with that bit of surplus. We will, as we talked about already, we'll do the prepay of special education. We will also be able to leave some of those funds to go back to the town for the sped stabilization fund. But we'll be able to vote on that at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Michael. So Susan will be totally updated on where we are and are you going this way or you?
Yeah, I'm out here. No, of course. So we've already started some of those conversations today and we're going some, we will continue to do that. And we're gonna have some more time together. So I promised her we would work together to get that.
Okay. I think, yeah, if you follow last year's format, I think it was fine, you know, what we have left, where is it gonna go? And then we can make the decision on the sped stabilization fund. And then for the committee to understand anything, any transfers that change from one cost center to the other, the school committee has to approve. But any transfers within a cost center, we, we don't have to approve that. So that'll be on the docket for July 8th.
Perfect. Mrs. Mar, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Mrs. Owen, do you feel, do you feel comfortable with everything thus far? I mean, do you feel like the transition so far has been pretty good and you have a grasp of what's going on with the district?
Yes, I do. I do. I've been, you know, sitting in all the, the admin team meetings probably for the last month or so now. So every Monday and Wednesday, I'm participating in those meetings, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'm participating in, in Michael's business meetings. I spent a couple Wednesdays in the office with Michael. I was with Michael all day today. And knowing that Michael's last week is probably next week, that we're gonna cram it all in Monday, Wednesday, Friday next week. Hopefully, it should be fine. I mean, it's, it's more learning how to get the numbers and where to find the numbers, what to do with the numbers and, and directions to go with is, you know, it's, it's similar in every district. It's just learning where to find it. Other than that, I mean, I'm not worried at all, really. I mean, Michael and I have done this once before, so we're okay.
Okay. So, all right. So you're feeling, you're feeling good so far?
I'm feeling good. Yeah. I mean, it was, I was fortunate to be able to spend as much time as I, I have with the district and the team, which makes it like I'm familiar with all the, you know, I'm familiar with the team and kind of the dynamics and the cultures. So it's been really good. It's, I'm feeling good about it.
And Craig, I should add that on a similar subject that Barbara Sawanka has, this is her second Wednesday. She was in last Wednesday and then she had a lot of virtual meetings the Thursday before, and she's planning and going in next Wednesday as well. So we've actually, you know, within a pandemic, done some, I think, good work in transitioning to very important positions into the district. But I appreciate you asking that because we certainly want to do all we can. Fortunate to have Susan be so open to working and transitioning. It's been like a godsend for us. So thank you, Susan.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Godsend for me.
Susan, if, if you wish, you know, we have a finance and facility subcommittee. And if you wanted to meet prior to July 8th, just to talk over some protocol or, or anything that, I think Paul and I are presently on that, that would be fine. We will reconstitute the committee on July 8th, after the election on the 27th of this month. So there, there likely will be a new finance and facility subcommittee meeting. So you can think about it and let us know. You know, or if Michael thinks it, it might, might be a good idea. I'm certainly open to it. I don't want to speak for Paul, but he's always, he's always open and amenable to, to meeting for subcommittee.
Absolutely.
No, that would, that would be great, actually.
Okay. Great. Excellent. Anything else, Michael?
No, that's it.
I did have a list of questions. I was gonna torture you on tenths of a percent of why certain departments are off other departments on your last meeting with us, but I opted to pass on that.
Thank you. I'm very grateful. Keep those for Susan for next one.
I would just ask for one. I would just ask for one final update for the projects.
Yep. So the, off the top of my head, the, so the projects we updated on last meeting, the we're working with the, at the moment, we're working with a number of vendors to schedule their work. So the cafeteria at the high school, we're trying to get, we're doing the painting and the lights there. Just getting the, just starting out the schedule for, you know, paying everything down. Likewise with the water fountains. So we are hoping to do now one every school. So an additional one because we already have someone in place. So just trying to get that. So we're, they're just, they're ordering parts and scheduling us. A lot of our vendors are backed up at the moment or it's taken a while to get parts, I think, related to coronavirus closures. But that should be starting soon. We took delivery of our 7D van yesterday. So that was great.
Exciting.
Excellent. I know. It was very exciting. So we're just getting that registered and that'll have to be approved by the state before we can start using it. The, we actually took a walk up and had a look at the middle school entrance today and they put in the security window, you know, like a bank window that's now in place. It looks great. Actually. Actually, I mean, I don't know what Patrick and Susan and Leslie thought, but it really felt like its own entrance. It felt like a nice space to walk into.
Oh, I think, I think it was, I would say even, it's even more prominent than the high school.
Yeah, don't say that.
Well, no, I don't mean it in that way. I mean, I was just, it really is going to be a nice entrance.
I think, I think it's much more appealing than the high school entrance where you have to walk through a maze of
It really is.
High brick walls. I mean, the middle school, you walk up and it, it's right there. And I think it's, it's a very nice entrance.
Yeah, I agree. So that's, those are the projects. I'm probably, I know I'm forgetting some, oh, the sidewalk, we're trying to get that scheduled as well. Working with town and getting the sidewalk repairs done.
So the projector, you said that
Projector.
You were waiting for
Yeah, we're just checking where, whilst we've got three quotes, we're just checking vendor schedules to see who can get it done before they open a school.
Okay.
That's going to help us choose.
Awesome. Yeah, that's fantastic. So the, so would, would you say this would be all done by the end of the school year? And also since we've got the budgeted approved last night, we'll be adding a custodian, is that correct?
We'll be adding what? Sorry?
Custodian as well.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah. So July 1st, they can start. So we'll.
Okay. Paul, I sent out with Michael's help, a message to the community today that talked about that. It outlined, you know, I said that we were very happy and grateful for, and then I listed the positions. So yet they're all, they're, they're being posted now.
You know, I, I also want to give a shout out to Ellen. You know, you, you work so hard with those budgets and, you know, I, I just want to tell you that it was a really team effort there and it's not easy. It's something that, you know, I signed up for and really not knowing when I got myself into it. A lot of hard meetings to make difficult choices. And, you know, Ellen, I got to say that, you know, you, you were breath fresh air and it was nice to work with you together and we got it done. And I just, I know it's a thankless job, but I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate that.
Okay. So I think we're on to your section.
Yep, we're on to our section. And so our first item is our school committee statement regarding diversity and the protests. And Ashley very kindly took a stab at a first draft. I hope everyone's had a chance to review it. And if we have any, any comments. I don't want to start, but if anyone else wants to start. Anyone? Would it be, Jen, do you have comments?
Well, would it be helpful to read it or do you think we should?
Want me to share it?
Sure. Is that all right, Ashley?
Why doesn't Ashley, why doesn't Ashley take the lead on this? Because she, isn't she, sort of take the oar on this?
Yeah.
So, okay. So I think that the agenda and the statement, the agenda item maybe isn't exactly what this addresses, but I, it's okay. But that wasn't actually reflected in the agenda. That's fine. So, okay. Are you going to share it, Pat?
I was trying, Ashley, and I just, I couldn't find it. What, what is it called? It's called?
It's in the packet and it's the anti-racism statement, school committee anti-racism statement.
I think I've got it, Patrick, if you
Have it. I'm sorry. I'm reentry timeline. I got so many things open here. Michael, if you could share.
I'm racing you to.
I'll just start talking about it if that's okay. So, um, I I think that as Mr. McClellan has said, he and I had an opportunity, have had many opportunities to have some discussions about these issues over time. And one of the things he shared with me a while back is that action plans speak more to him than statements, which is, I think, something that I, I took to heart and I totally understand. And I've seen a lot of statements released and I think the, the police chief in our town specifically, I think, released a really impactful statement, I think, from us because we are the body in town that is charged with sort of maintaining policy and oversight, for lack of a better term. That's not really what I mean in each building, but of, of the education of our kids, I, it was, it seemed like it made perfect sense to outline some concrete steps that we as a committee are going to take to address this problem directly. And so that was the effort here to name the, name the problem, the challenge, commit to addressing it and then create a roadmap for how we were going to do it. And so I don't know if you want me, it's kind of long. I don't know if I'm going to read it or if you want to just start discussing it because it's on the screen now. What do you think?
Everyone just give their input, Ashley, if they have any. I don't think we need to read it yet.
So one thing I will say is that I think hiring should be the, the discussion around making more of an effort to recruit and hire candidates who are Black, African American and people of color, I think will be, it would be a beneficial addition to this if that's something that we're interested in. I understand that we only are responsible for a certain number of contracts, but we can make it known that we would appreciate more diversity in our workforce. Cohasset public schools, if we want to.
So may I comment?
Of course.
So, um, the, you're right. The actual hiring of staff is, is within the purview of, you know, the building principals and superintendent Sullivan. I think the note I made about that is to ensure our budgets include funding for ongoing professional development and recruitment and retention of staff of different colors and voices. So that, that's what we can support. And as Elisa and Patrick commented on, we kind of have to think outside the box when you're looking for a staff of different, you know, of, of different races and, and different backgrounds. And, and that might require some funding for hypothetically, I'm just saying hypothetically, maybe it's a trip that goes, you know, we go to New York City or we, or, or not we, you know, Dr. Sullivan and Elisa go to a job here in New York City or, or something like that. And I, I think if we can support the funding for that and, and professional development and training, that's how we can participate in that initiative. That's just my thought.
I have, just so you know, I have had someone from the community reach out to me that does this for a living. She goes to organizations and helps them become more diverse and recruit qualified candidates of color and different cultures to their organizations. And she reached right out to help me. So I'm open for that. Now, as I said, Ashley, it's been on the list for a long time. We have not realized it and it's been on our action plans. This, this current one, and I, I, looking back the one before it as well, it's, it's, it's not been a successful initiative. So we absolutely have to figure out how to do it better.
One of the things actually that we're doing is we're creating more opportunities or really kind of getting into colleges and universities around us to recruit student teachers, their pre-pack hours. Cohasset hasn't in the past really had a very robust student, student teacher population. They just haven't come in. So we do have two teacher, two student teachers that are coming in the fall from Bridgewater. And then Elise and I were just talking about going and some relationships with some of the schools, you know, and universities in the city to see if we could even get them to come down, do some of their pre-pack hours. Some of it's distance and how do you get here? But we do have, you know, we do have the commuter rail and some other things. So it's really just creating those relationships. So I have some relationships that I'd already created with some colleges down this way, but, but I want to, you know, reach out and make more relationships with people. Just so that we can get some more people in the door. Because the more you get in the door for, it's good for everybody because they, they bring new energy, but also it allows us to have an opportunity to bring, you know, candidates in that, you know, future candidates. Because we don't know, you know, when they walk through the door. So, so we'll build that capacity too.
Is there any other committee comments or questions? No? Okay. I did, I just had two more comments. I think number five is great. And I think the, the next committee should look at that as maybe one of our goals and our action plan. So it stays top of mind for the, the committee in terms of, you know, the policy subcommittee and the whole, the whole school committee reviewing it. And I just have three words that possibly could be omitted in the very first line. I would say the Cohasset School Committee is committed to an environment for all staff and students. Take out the word create. I think we're, we're, we're committed to it and that's what we're going to do. Just my opinion. And then in the fifth line down, I would just eliminate the words by design. So the sentence would read, "We recognize that our country was founded on the ideals of equality for all, but that people of color, specifically Black and African American, have been systemically oppressed." Period. That's why? Um, I think it, I think it makes it a stronger statement. That's, I just think it, it's, feels stronger to me.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
I, I kind of agree. I think it is a stronger statement to just say the action of what is, happened. But I, I mean, I could go either way. I do think it makes it stronger.
So if there are no other comments or questions on this, we can have a motion to approve this statement as, as amended. And then I'm comfortable with if the committee is with Ashley sharing it in her usual format on Facebook 143 and we could get it posted on our district website under the school committee section, if that's agreeable to everybody.
I, I have, I guess I have a discussion point before. I didn't realize we were voting. I thought we were just discussing this because we can't discuss it sort of without, you know, you know, we can't discuss it in private basically. So I thought we were just discussing our revisions and then we would vote on it another time, so voting on it. I'm, I'm wondering about number four. I, I think that I, I think that hosting something of this nature is, is great. I, I don't like requiring each committee member to participate in three. What happens if each committee member, like, you know, isn't around for one of the three? I mean, just, I, I, I think that, that may be
Saying, and I totally understand, we don't need more things on our calendar, but I think that could also be seen as like reading a book or listening to like a TED Talk or, you know, we, there's a lot of ways, I think, that we can do three things each of us over the course of the year that don't necessarily require us to show up to something on a, on a date and time.
Ashley, we could, obviously we have that major professional development that I think we're going to try to do in October. That's an open invitation. And then I foresee many opportunities for discussion and conversation that the school committee members could be allowed to, you know, but obviously you're welcome to come to and we could formally invite you to some of those. I mean, I'm not trying to comment on the three at all, but I just want folks to know that there's a, there will be opportunity for you, just like us, to receive more education on, on these important topics.
Yeah. So, you know, would you say encourage, you know, each committee member and to participate in three? Anti-racism trainings or, or I like educational opportunities because that kind of covers a lot. Trainings to me say, okay, we're going to have a seminar.
Greg, would that feel better if I just took that out and just said educational opportunities?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be better. And, and, and Patrick, you know what?
I'm not uncomfortable with the anti-race. I don't, I'm just, the requirement is, is where I'm sort of having trouble. Like encourage, I like that word, you know, or, or I don't know, strongly recommend. I, I, I just, the requirement is like, what happens if you can't? It's like, so is there, it's just sort of, that's my, my issue. I don't, the anti-racism trainings is, you know, or edu- education, I don't care about that part. And I'm, I'm, I'm amenable to changes there too, if people would like it. But I'm just, I'm just struggling with the requirement of each committee member to attend three trainings.
Yeah.
So encouraging?
Sure.
So, so one of those things, Patrick, what I, what I just popped into my head based on the presentation from your leadership team, you know, they talk about book clubs and book groups and summer readings. And I know some of that is for the children and some, some isn't. I would welcome as an option, being part of the, you know, knowing what those books are and so that I can read them myself. And know, know what everyone's talking about when, when you say, well, we, we've read this, you know, and maybe some of them are more educationally driven, but personally for me, it would be nice to, to know what those taught, what those titles are and, and I could choose that could, it could fit into one of these. Is that kind of what you were thinking, Ashley?
Yeah.
Okay. Regarding a vote, I don't, I don't mean to push the committee. I, I, I intuitively sensed a little bit of urgency since we aren't meeting again until the 8th, but we do not have to vote on this. That is up to the committee.
No, I, I just didn't know we were. I'm not, that's fine. I think, I think this is fine. Ashley's worked really hard. Mrs. Collier's worked really hard on this and I, I'm not trying to delay it. I would, I just didn't know we were. And so I didn't speak up when we were doing revisions. I thought I could just maybe handle that another time. But that's fine. I'm, I'm not, I'm not worried about a vote. I just wanted to make that, give that input.
Okay. All right. I mean, Ashley, do you think it's important for us to, to get this out there sooner rather than later or?
I can see two sides of it. I also know that we're going to have another member of the committee joining us and I would, I, I don't really, I feel like it's almost like six of one half dozen of the other. Yes, I do believe there's urgency. I do believe that many people in the community are waiting to see some movement on our part on this issue.
I, I think we should vote on it and I think we should get it up on our website. I think that there is, we should do that. I think.
we should do that. I think. Oh, and Ash, I just felt like I, I didn't have an answer right away why I thought by design should be taken out. And I just want to say because you have it, that idea captured in the word systematically.
Yeah.
So the, the idea of what you're saying is captured in that word, I think.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, A- Ashley, do you want to just review the changes so everyone's aware?
Sure. So we will elaborate on the fact that we will support the superintendent in, what, in however possible in broadening his employment searches or employee recruitment. And we will take out the word, we'll make the first sentence more assertive by saying that we are committed to an environment. We'll take out the words by design and we will encourage school committee members to take part in anti-racism educational opportunities.
Yes. Got it. So if everyone's in agreement, um, could I have a motion to approve the Cohasset School Committee's statement on anti-racism?
So moved?
You have a second?
Second, Craig McClellan.
Okay, all in favor, roll call please.
I, Paul Curney.
I, Ashley Colery.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Jen Madden.
I, Craig McClellan.
Excellent. Um, and thank you, Ashley, for all the work on this. I, I, um, I know it's near and dear to your heart and I appreciate the passion in which you, you put into this as well as the thought process. Um, so thank you.
Can I also just add, uh, Mrs. Mar, that, uh, I, I think that, um, I, I would like to point out that Mrs. Colery has been, this has been an issue for her well before, um, this was a national issue. Um, I mean, it's been a national issue for some time, but, but, you know, a very, very pertinent one, um, and a current event, so to speak. Um, and, and that's, um, it's pretty awesome that she brings that perspective to this committee, and I think we're really lucky to have her, uh, in that sense. Thanks.
I could, I couldn't have said it better. Thank you, Craig. I, I agree. I, I definitely agree. Okay, um, next is our superintendent's year-end evaluation. So, um, for the committee, I sent you out the, um, the wrap-up and I apologize it was late, but I literally was just finishing it or making a few typographical changes and corrections. Um, and Superintendent Sullivan has no issue if we put it up on the screen. In the past, that has not been done, but I'll leave it up to the committee if they feel it would be, um, more beneficial, um, to do so.
Absolutely.
Okay. So Mr. McMillan has the document to put it up. This is our end-of-cycle summit of evaluation of Superintendent Dr. Patrick Sullivan. He's been, um, our superintendent for the past year. It's his first year as a superintendent of schools. The process, um, uh, there were four committee members that submitted individual evaluations and, um, these comments and ratings reflect those four individuals. Um, and the, I'd like, I had sent out a note that, you know, if you would like to, to read something at the end that you wrote specifically, um, on your own evaluation, that's fine. It has been inconsistent past practice whether or not the individual evaluations have gone on to the superintendent. And I will leave that between each of you and Dr. Sullivan. If you want to share your own, um, evaluation of him, uh, that will be up to you. I do have them all and I'd be happy to send it if you want me to, or you can send it individually, uh, on your own. So, um, this is a rubric devised by, you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It doesn't really leave much room for, um, you know, flexibility. The, are, there are goals, professional practice goals, student learning goals, and district improvement goals, and then there are standards and indicators. So I'm just going to go through this and, um, I will note how, how the, the ranking, everything is marked with an X came about by the, by the vote of, um, the, the four of us who submitted, um, evaluations. So under professional practice goal, the consensus was exceeded, exceeded expectations. Uh, there were, there's one for significant progress and three for exceeded. Under the student learning goal, it met expectations. There was one for significant progress, two for met, and one for exceeded. And for the district improvement goals, one for significant progress, two for, and two for met and one for exceeded. So it's the majority of rankings determined the final ranking. Uh, under the, um, assessment for performance on standards, under instructional leadership, it was unanimous proficient. It was unanimous proficient under management and operations. Under family and community engagement and under professional culture, um, it was a two-two, so I kind of put it as an X, X-plus. Um, I can put it in the other box as an X-minus or, or whatever. Um, it was unfortunate we had an even number because an odd number would have, would have tilted it, but overall, um, it was proficient. So the overall summative performance, um, evaluation unanimously was proficient. And I'll just read, I'll read the comments. So for the committee's understanding, I, I went through your comments. You'll see some of your statements or phraseology exactly because I thought it was terrific. And then some of it I tried to come up with, um, a, a summary of, of everyone's comments. So overall, through a year of great challenges, some completely unexpected, Dr. Sullivan has demonstrated a commitment to the district and the community. Strong, proactive, dedicated, steady, unwavering, commendable, thoughtful, inclusive, collaborative, funny, and kind. Are but a few of the adjectives used to describe Dr. Sullivan in his first year as superintendent. He is a visionary leader with a capacity to unite stakeholders into a shared vis- vision. His open house to meet his leadership team indicated to the community that they are indeed a team. Each administrator's energy and enthusiasm was palpable at that meeting and set the tone for the year. Open and consistent communication is also a hallmark of Dr. Sullivan's first year as superintendent. His approach has resulted in a sense of unity amongst stakeholders as he has listened and learned as he created the shared vision for our educational community. By actively listening and learning to all stakeholders on a variety of issues, Dr. Sullivan has laid the foundation for respectful and meaningful discourse that supports honest assessments and resolution of issues going forward. He has demonstrated a commitment to not only improve district performance, but the experience that our staff and students have in Cohasset Public Schools. The Navigator Newsletter for Staff and Families, um, as well, and here's a typo I didn't catch, as well, was well-written and thoughtful, but not too abundant, um, and Blackboard messages kept the community informed and engaged. I don't know if we can scroll up. Oh, who did that? Michael, did you do that? Um, of particular note was the warm and caring approach to staff and families when dealing with a pandemic while simultaneously developing the operational plan for execution of remote learning and instruction. He confronted this health crisis straight on, staying up to date and current on state, federal, and DESI guidance, all the while maintaining open lines of communication with all stakeholders. And a blank page, I didn't edit. And so now it dovetails into his performance goals. His student learning goal was to focus the district on student wellness and inclusion through the theme, through the eyes of the student. This, he met expectations. Uh, there was one for significant progress, two for met, and one for exceeded. Professional practice goal, collaborate with the district and build, building leadership to foster effective communication vehicles throughout the district. This was exceeded, um, with three, three ratings of exceeded and one as met. His district improvement goal, number one, create an entry plan in order to gain familiarity with stakeholders to identify effective past practice and potential areas for improvement and to facilitate a successful transition into the role of the superintendent. Uh, again, this was an X-plus. There were two that met and two that exceeded. The district improvement goal, number two, collaborate with district and building leaders to create a cohesive instructional leadership team that continues to focus on building structures and practices regarding teaching and learning. This was also an X-plus and the met. There were two, uh, ratings of met and two of exceeded. The next section is on the, um, the standards, the, uh, performance rating for standards. And the first standard is instructional leadership. And I'm not going to read through each of the items and what they mean. I think we've all read them, but you can see that, uh, we are very consistent in proficient, um, down the line with an overall proficient rating for instructional leadership. And the comments were, "The piloting of a new elementary math curriculum is a proactive response to assessments in our previous curriculum." "The development of the learning walks allowed Dr. Sullivan and his leadership team to notice, wonder, and be inspired by what they have seen in the classroom." "Dr. Sullivan rates collaboration as a highly effective tool as he has implemented many study teams to look at various areas of instruction such as SEL, cultural competency, tiered instruct- instruction, et cetera." So that's instructional leadership. Management and operations, um, overall proficient rating in the first, I will highlight, under environment, that was an exceed, um, exceeded expectations. The environment says develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. Um, the rest was very consistent across the evaluators as proficient for an overall rating of proficient in management and operations. Comments are, "Dr. Sullivan leads his staff with respect and kindness. He is approachable. He is visible at school and community events. He's been proactive revising protocols or suggesting policy changes such as hiring protocols, mandated reporting, the memorandum of agreement with the Cohasset Police Department, and Alice Training, to name a few. He skillfully negotiated with the CTA on revised school start times, uh, version two, as well as MOAs with the CTA regarding remote learning and instruction and evaluations, avoiding impact bargaining. He's developed a respectful, collaborative relationship with town leaders, town manager, the town health agent, the chief of police, the fire chief, the director of emergency management, and the chair of the board of selection, particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic." Standard three, family and community engagement, um, proficient, um, in this standard with an exceed or an exemplary. I'm sorry, I was saying exceeds expectations. It's exemplary in communication, um, which that standard says engages in regular two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance. "Dr. Sullivan immediately began his tenure with transparent transparency and thoughtful deliberate communication with our educational community. The opening day convocation through the eyes of the student was moving and set the tone for the year that Cohasset Public Schools is a wel- welcoming and warm place to be. Dr. Sullivan has engaged parents and family members by putting them on various committees such as safe schools and hiring committees. In addressing the whole educational community, perhaps not enough specific messaging was targeted to our students from Boston." And last, professional culture. Um, so this is overall an exemplary rating, um, with exemplary for commitment to high standards, communication, shared vision, um, leading to exemplary. "Dr. Sullivan has created a professional, respectful, caring culture in Cohasset Public Schools. He expects no more from his staff than that which he's willing to do himself. He fosters collaboration amongst the staff and supports and praises them for the work they do. He's evidenced regular and productive meetings with leadership and other personnel. Teachers know him, kids know him, and community members know him. And when he asks you, what do you think? He really wants to know. He is genuine. He also demonstrates a firm commitment to improvement, and he's handled difficult situations gracefully and swiftly." So that is the evaluation.
Sorry. Ellen, I'm a little confused because the, it's exemplary in the professional, but on the top, it's proficient plus?
On, on which, on which one?
Summative at the top. For professional culture, I'm sorry. I-
Okay, for professional culture.
Oh, if you scroll up all the way to the top. Oh, I'm sorry, uh.
So, so, so that, the form was highlighted? Are you talking about the P that's like bolded?
On step two. Standard four. So it's on the first page, on the very first page?
Yep, two, standard four.
The professional culture is listed as X-plus, but it, I, it looks like it was exemplary.
It, it should, it should be exemplary and thank you for catching that. I didn't catch it. There were, there were two votes in each on this front page, but in the detail, it came out to exemplary. So, um, if, if you follow, because I was trying to make cash, so there were ratings here and then the ratings, the ratings on the detail page did not match. So, thank you. Uh, whoever just moved that over. Thank you. Thank you for catching that, Jennifer. This is the first time I've done this, so I apologize for the errors and the missteps.
Well, there's a lot of components to this.
This form is like, super detailed.
It, it, it is super detailed and then the tutorial they give you is even more super detailed.
Great job. You had to compile four people into one of these super detailed, four super detailed things into one super detailed thing. So, thank you.
No, it really, it really has, um, has been a pleasure, but, you know, at this point, I would like each of the members to comment. They can either read something that they wrote specifically. And we can take this down now, Michael, please? Thank you. Um, so Jen, do you want to start?
You know, I'm the one that, so now I'm all nervous, but I'm the one that I always liked when each committee member sort of, you know, picked, um, something to read and, um, I guess I picked up on that because I, you know, I, I rated, um, Patrick as exceptional in creating, um, a professional culture. So, um, I wrote, "Dr. Sullivan has created an exceptional professional culture in Coh- in Cohasset. I believe there's a very simple reason for this. He cares. And this is clear in his consistent actions and in the attention he gives to those who work with him. Looking through Dr. Sullivan's calendar is evidence that he keeps in touch with all administrators and personnel as well as teachers on a regular basis. Recognizing the efforts and accomplishments of colleagues is an important part of creating a positive culture. Patrick celebrates the work of others through his newsletters, meetings, Twitter feed, and spotlights on learning, a favorite on our school committee agenda. Beyond celebrations, Patrick's development of observation teams offer teachers and principals concrete feedback of positive practices and suggestions for reflection. Um, and evidence, you can see the learning walks, the look-for notes. Having established communication norms and expectations, stakeholders can discuss best practices in a positive and nurturing way that moves conversations and ideas forward. These discussions have empowered teachers and principals to think critically and consider changes. Early in his first days and weeks as superintendent, Dr. Sullivan gathered the leadership team for a retreat. Together, this team established norms and expectations and methods of communication. In late August, Dr. Sullivan introduced his team to the community in the Learning Commons. Listening to administrators speak, it was evident that this team was energized under his leadership. As a result of this retreat, cultural competency was added as a major part of the SEL in the strategic plan. Dr. Sullivan's book study group, learning walks, collaboration with community organizations, procurement of leading consultants have encouraged healthy discussions aimed at creating an environment that invite, that serves all students. And so I just, I'll just read the rest. "Dr. Sullivan's theme through the eyes of a student provided a unifying idea that connected all stakeholders to a shared vision. The events of this year put that cohesiveness to a test as the world faced both the COVID, global pandemic, and racial injustice. Dr. Sullivan has gathered his team to respond to the racial unrest by publicly acknowledging this crisis and his commitment to do our part to end racism and offer, as well as offer, resources and a safe space for students and families to understand issues surrounding racial injustice. Shifting an entire district to remote learning was a difficult and challenging task. His team provided remote learning and created a remote learning guide for reference while providing emotional support to students. Dr. Sullivan did not do this alone. He led a team of educators who through his leadership was positioned and ready to work hard to help students through these extremely challenging times." Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ashley, Craig, you guys want, want to say anything?
That was really good, Jen.
I know, I don't want to say anything myself.
Follow that, but I will. It's going to, interestingly and ironically, it will be brief, something that's not usually my strength. But thank you, Jen, that was perfect. I will just read the short. "Dr. Sullivan has demonstrated a firm commitment to improvement continuously, which is what I value most in his leadership in Cohasset. I have a great deal of confidence in his ability to lead. I think he's a wonderful manager, willing to allow those who report to him to demonstrate their abilities, and also has shown a willingness to make difficult decisions when they are necessary in order to lead a better way forward for the district."
Thank you.
I'll just read a few of my comments. I, I actually voted unsatisfactory across the board. No, I don't have, my, unfortunately, I don't have my evaluation in front of me, so I'm not going to read anything, but I, I would just like to say that first and foremost, while we are obviously evaluating our superintendent, I do consider that evaluation reflective of the superintendent. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Sullivan was making some, some strange ear gestures.
He can't hear, I don't think.
Can you hear us, Patrick?
We can see you.
I can't hear, I couldn't hear. I'm sorry, my internet cut out. I apologize. I didn't hear anything you said. So I hope you said good things and hear a word.
No, no problem. Did it cut out right after I said I voted for unsatisfactory?
Very, very shortly thereafter, you said something like, I heard something like, now I'm going to really let him have it.
Yeah.
And then it blacked out. No, but I'm serious. I didn't hear anything. I'm so sorry.
So I didn't say much. What I said is, before I, I say anything, I just wanted to mention that while we're evaluating you in particular, I, I do view the evaluation as reflective of not only this, our superintendent, but also I, I think that you work so closely with Dr. Scollins, the assistant superintendent, and, and Mr. McMillan, the current director of finance and operations. It's really that sort of triumvirate that, that, that I think brings all this value to the table, obviously, under your leadership, Dr. Sullivan. And I, I, that is a, that is quite an evaluation for, for a maiden year here, and it is well deserved. You are, you, you're, you're, you're very dedicated, and, and we're very, very lucky to have you, and you know, I consider you not only a professional colleague, but a friend. And I think that, I'm just very thankful as a parent for what you're doing for the district. I truly believe that, that we're heading in, in a really great direction under your leadership, along with Dr. Scollins's leadership, and thank you. As I always say, I don't think that you educators hear it enough, but thank you so, so much for everything that you do.
Great. Thank you, Craig. I'd just like to echo that and some of the other committees' thoughts. You know, Dr. Sullivan, you're only as good as your team, and you have an awesome team, and you've been able to put that together, and you know, that's, that's, you can see that throughout the district and throughout the, right from all the teachers and, and their attitudes are are genuine. I said that, you know, you bring hope, happiness, and help to our Cohasset families. You have a proactive approach to our schools. As much as Cohasset families have opinions, they're always met with empathy in very informative, in a very informative way. You have great hospitality skills, and we're looking forward to working with you next year. Thank you very much, Paul. Thank you all. It's very, very kind.
Thank you. So, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. You know, I, I reflect, I reflect back on, on the process we went through to, to hire you and, and what the committee did. You, you know, we, we vet, we, we went through a process, and honestly, I didn't know you that well, which was okay. You, you were, you were the guy at the table, you know, the assistant superintendent, and what I knew for sure that we had the right guy when our consultant from the Collins Center said he hit every mark in the focus groups. He goes, "You got a winner here." He hit every mark from every stakeholder group that participated, and he said, "Don't let him go." So I'm glad we went through the process, and I'm glad we took his advice, and I only wish I had children in the district. Well, not really, I'm too old to too old, maybe grandchildren someday, but who knows? No, we're, we're in incredibly capable hands, and, and I look forward to a year next year that has a little less trauma. When you think of what your first task was of the year to roll out revising schools' start times in about 25 working days, it was kind of amazing, kind of amazing what, what you did and how you did it, and how you listened, and how we revised, and how we, you know, we made adjustments. It wasn't a plan that was going to stick, and we were going to move on. You listened, and I think that really cemented for the community, everything we've said about you, that you're a listener, and you learn, and you want, you want people to tell you what they think, and part, one of my favorite parts of our conversations is, well, what do you think? Because you really mean it. It's not lip service. You really mean it, so. Now, do you have any questions or anything you would like to say?
No, just to thank the, thank the committee for your work on that and the kindness you've shown me in my first year and the support. You know, as Paul said, it's a, it's a team effort, and I feel very supported by your team, and I feel honored to be a part of your team, so. No, just a, just a big thank you, and, you know, I'm, as I mentioned in the previous conversation, always learning, and I value not only our conversations as a team, but when I have a chance to talk to you each individually at various times for various reasons and on various committees, it, I learn a lot, and I, I'm just very reflective on what you've told me here, so thank you very much, and I should add that, one thing I feel a little badly about is I didn't congratulate Dr. Scollins as being a new grandmother. I think she has-
She totally does have a baby, and I was like, wait, did we already talk about the baby? Did I miss?
I, I feel terrible. Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations. That's no kidding.
Early lifetime, so.
Leslie, is that your first?
Yes, we're very excited. We have Leo James. I'm sorry?
Is that your first?
Yes, and I'm, and I'm obnoxious, yes.
Oh, it's so awesome. Congratulations. That's so awesome.
What's his name?
His name is Leo James.
Oh, that's, that's my brother's name.
Aww.
Leo James, yeah.
Really? That's really interesting, yeah.
But thank you for that, and it can, and I, I'm going to do a shameless plug. I just want to thank Dr. Sullivan for having me come here to Cohasset, and everything you wrote about him was just making me smile because it's all so true. And this is an amazing place to work, and I have loved every second of it, even if I was crying a little bit over remote learning and trying to figure it all out. I loved it because Dr. Sullivan made it. He made it doable. He made it, he made it enjoyable, and he also pushed me to think differently and to think, always be thinking about the kids and make sure that, that we're keeping them in our sights at all times, so, anyway, there's my shameless plug, but, but thank you so much.
It's nice that she said that, even though I forgot to acknowledge her as a new grandmother, so. I appreciate that, but no, um, yeah, I'm just honored to be part of a team and really to be in the community, and you know, I'm, I'm very open to the fact that I'm, I'm, I'm still learning, and I think, you know, I, I feel good that I've grown a lot this year and that we've grown as a district. I, I, one of the things I said when I came on is that, you know, I'll, I'll grow with the district here, and I, I believe that's, that's happening, so I feel, feel good about that, and I feel really confident in, in the way we're going to move forward, so, thank you, and thank you to the community.
Thank you. So, Dr. Sullivan, I will drop by central office, the cover page with my signature and then your signature, and then if the committee would like a signed, signed top page, I sent it, the document to you on email, I can scan and send it out to everybody, so you have it officially.
Thank you all very much again. Very appreciated.
Okay.
Sorry, Ellen, I just want to make sure I have this straight. Do, do we all have to sign it, or?
No, no, it's just the chair signs it.
Okay.
But in case you wanted like a, you know, you wanted a signed, sign thing. Okay, um, excellent. Next, we'll move on to the FY20 goals report and goals and accomplishments. So Jennifer, if, if I could indulge, and let's just go through the PowerPoint, because it's repetitive to the goals report.
It's pretty much the same thing.
Yeah, it is.
Can I, am I allowed to share my screen, or could someone put the, it's the PowerPoint presentation?
Oh, yeah, that all came through, I think, as a PDF on the documents. Called Cohasset.
If you have it there, you should be able to share your screen, Jennifer. Otherwise, I can find it.
Uh, hold on. Yeah, that's it, so, yeah.
Is that you doing that, Michael, or is that me?
Just definitely not me. My hands are up here.
Okay. Go ahead.
Jen's going to present this.
I'm confused, seriously. Who is, who's the puppet master here?
Is it Ashley?
Yeah.
Oh. Thank you. Okay, so, um, so each year in, in the summer, the school committee comes together and sets up its goals for the year. And so here, this PowerPoint is a reflection on those goals, and we sort of regularly, I, I want to say maybe every six weeks, we review our goals, and we give a green light if we were successful in achieving the goal, a yellow light if we made some progress towards the goal, and a red light if we didn't. I think it's really important to say that these are goals, so we might not achieve them all, but we certainly, as a committee, work and try to stay, it keeps us on task to make sure that we're moving forward. So in goal number one was to recruit, retain, and develop exceptional district leadership, a district leadership team and staff. So part of that was for the committee members to participate in a welcome vehicle for new leadership. So the school committee attended Dr. Sullivan's open house for his leadership team August 22nd, and I made mention of that in my evaluation because it was so clear from that that the leadership team was energized. And so our committee was really, we all attended, and I think as a committee, it was, it showed that we supported the leadership team too. So, and the next goal was to collaborate with the superintendent to create an entry plan with SMART goals that align with the strategic plan and monitor the progress mid-year and complete the year one evaluation, and I gave that a green light because we just completed the evaluation. Goals were presented by Dr. Sullivan on September 18th, 2019. His mid-cycle evaluation was completed on January 22nd, 2020, and the end of the year evaluation was just completed tonight on June 17th. So, so everyone knows these evaluations and the rubric we use are mandated by Desi, so, but it was a, it was a lot of work for for Dr. Sullivan as a new superintendent to create that entry plan. We do have, our committee has a subcommittee that worked with Dr. Sullivan to make that plan. Adapt agendas, agenda setting process in order to ensure effective, efficient, and informative school committee meetings. Year-long general agenda was distributed August 7th. So when we meet in the summer, one of the things the committee does is set the agendas, set general agendas for the year. Clearly, things come up, but it does sort of set the course for the year, and there are certain logical places to have certain meetings happen. So for instance, you know, the budget hearing usually happens in March, so we'll set up you know, discussions around the budget, and then, you know, different things come up in the year. We also set up our spotlights on learning with the, in our general agenda. And the process was established to request agenda items reviewed with the school committee members. So one of the things is we were trying to refine our agenda this, this year to make our meetings a little bit more efficient. So that was something that we're still working on to make the meetings more efficient and to bring everybody up to speed. So we gave ourselves a yellow light on that. Create vehicles to strengthen the communication and collaboration with the district leadership team, parents, town committees, and the citizens of Cohasset. Develop new and effective communication mechanisms that allow stakeholders to feel heard and be informed. So one of the things that we did, thank you to Ashley, was to give a little update on Facebook 143, which provided sort of updates and recaps of the meeting. They're not official minutes, but they are a way to inform the public about generally what happens at each, at each meeting, so that we gave ourselves a green light. Establish a program to honor and recognize individual community members who selflessly give of their time or talents to support Cohasset students. So we started that process actually a year ago, and most of the work for that has, was done last year, and we really didn't make any progress this year on that.
Jen, I, I'd like to tell you that, I just like to follow up on this. Dr. Sullivan and I and Michael worked on this last week. Patrick, could you tell us how that's going about the recognition to the folks who have been helping us, something that we worked on last week? Yes, so I, I, we're creating letters to, we're going to be creating letters that go out to to, to individuals who have helped financially with Cohasset Public Schools through donations, and also who have made great assistance to help our district make some strides this year, and we're going to have them going out, signed by me, hopefully within the week. That's, that's our goal right now, and I know that we were going to work together, Paul, to compile that list, and I'd be glad to, you know, to, to do that when I get the list, but we're ready to, ready to go with that, and we're, we're in formation of that letter right now. I think it's a great idea, so thank you.
And we're, we're in formation of that letter right now. I think it's a great idea. So thank you.
Okay. Can I just, can I comment on that? So typically the chair at the end of the year sends the thank yous for all the donations because they're gifts to the school committee, um, and the school committee votes to accept them. So, I mean, I, yeah, Jen, Jen, am I correct in that?
Yeah, I think that, that that might be something that we need a discussion about. Because there is sort, there are sort of protocols in place for that, particularly around donations.
Yeah.
And I thought this, I thought that the spirit of this goal was actually not necessarily, um, a financial, but more, we were looking for people who really kind of just volunteer. They, they, I mean, I can think of a number of parents, I mean, um, who, um, just go and do the, do the bulletin board or take pictures of kids. And, um, I thought we were, that the spirit of this goal was to focus on, um, not financial, giving, but more in the spirit of volunteerism.
Yep.
That was our discussion, Jen, uh, between Dr. Sullivan and I. And, uh, that was mentioned. It wasn't just a financial. It was folks who give their time as well. So.
The school committee goal, Paul. This is something that we should be doing.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's what I was trying to do. Is to try to, um, collaborating on that so we can put it as a red light. I would just say that right now it's still a yellow, but still work in progress. So.
Glad to help in any way with that. And I, obviously I, I wasn't aware of that. Well, you had just mentioned Ellen, but I'd be, you know, glad to just work with Paul to get it out to folks who have made contributions. It's very easy to do. I don't mean monetary contribution. I mean contributions in their service, whatever, whatever the committee wants.
It's nice to share that it's really, it should be coming from the school committee, I think. It might be nice to share that, uh, Patrick?
Yeah, I'd be fine. I'd be happy to, whatever I can do to help with that and collaborate on it, I'm glad to do.
Well, we can, I mean, it's, it's going to be a new committee and it's a, a goal that carried over from last year. There's no reason it can't carry over and continue to be a goal. Like, I, I preface this whole, uh, presentation by saying these are goals. And sometimes you, you know, you should aim high and sometimes you don't really make the goal, but it doesn't, you know, that's, that's part of the process of trying to strive to become better is maybe you don't make the mark, but you keep going. So we're on create a system. So we're back on the PowerPoint, Ashley?
Sorry, I realized that my personal notes were on that copy. So I felt like it wasn't, mine wasn't the best one. I didn't realize it when I beat you to the punch and shared it. Sorry. So I asked Dr. Sullivan to put his copy up.
Ashley, is this what you were looking for or did you want?
For the PowerPoint presentation?
Well, it's still a PDF, Jen. It translates to a PDF. So, um.
I was fearful that the notes were going to be on that document as well. So that's why I put this up. But if you want me to try to use my version of that document, I haven't looked at it to see if the notes are on it though.
No, they wouldn't be. You, you can, you can put them up.
Okay, I'll try to find it here. And what is it called again? I'm sorry. Oops.
Well, it's, it's FY 20 Goals and Accomplishments, I believe.
Yep. It looks like that.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, thanks.
I've got it here as well, Patrick. If you're, there you go.
I got it. Okay, where are we? Let's see. I'm sorry.
We're we're still on goal two. There it is. Uh, create a system for regular policy review to ensure that policies are updated and meet the needs of all stakeholders in the class at public schools. We gave ourselves a green light on this because what we did is a worksheet was created by policy with the date and creation and date of update to guide the policy subcommittee. So what we have is a spreadsheet which, um, helps us know what's been updated and, and, and when it was updated. And that's a very helpful document. Support evening, evening public events that showcase community partners and engage our district in productive conversations around important issues. Um, I, we gave ourselves a yellow light on this and this is really a yellow light by virtue of the fact that, um, we didn't really have any evening public events due to COVID. Work with leadership to establish a student school committee representative and a method to receive school council concerns and initiatives. So, um, this was, uh, great. We had student representatives at each of our school committee meetings this year. And for each meeting, they gave, um, an update. So we can go to the next page. So goal three, enhance the culture of security by strengthening the safety and security of school buildings and grounds. Continue the safety and security assessment process. The security subcommittee, along with the SRO and the Cohasset Middle High School Leadership, developed a plan to begin looking at after-school safety and security. Building leadership will develop the plan and the security subcommittee will provide policy if needed. An assessment was provided by the Cohasset Police Department. The security subcommittee also worked with the superintendent, Dr. Sullivan, for a new memorandum of, of a
Understanding.
Understanding, sorry, uh, with the Cohasset Police Department. That was more reflective of the needs of the district. That was actually done, um, in the fall of this year. Um, it was a, you know, a joint effort between, um, the school committee, um, and Dr. Sullivan in creating that plan. Place three SRO reports on the school committee agenda for the beginning, middle and end of the year. Um, we had two presentations this year, uh, one in August and one in May. And, uh, just for scheduling reasons, um, we just missed the third. Goal four, finance. Align educational goals of the district with the sound financial practices, budgeting and managing and reporting. Collaborate with real leadership, capital budgets, advisory, board of selectmen and town management for capital budget requests. Um, we held a joint meeting with the capital budget committee on September 23rd, for special town meeting items requested for funding. Items included, um, a 9D wheelchair van construction for a secure, uh, a secure middle school entrance, the Cohasset, uh, middle high school auditorium projector for a total of $112,000. We reviewed with the advisory committee on October 15th. Follow-up meetings with capital budget were held on October 21st and advisory on October 28th and a board of selectmen meeting on October 29th. We conducted a walkthrough of the school facilities with invited members from capital budget, board of selectmen advisory on November 19th. Um, to highlight legitimate facility needs, we worked with the leadership team, to, but on a budget workshop in January, um, on January 6th, 2020. Sorry. Goal number four. Um, fiscal year 21 budget requested, um, the town to fund a one-time expenditure for the new elementary math curriculum, which they did at 75%. Um, we met, um, with capital budgets, January 28th and March 11th for town meeting requests. We achieved tier one critical needs and level services with town allocation on March 4th. We absorbed, um, a 66,000 cut to the budget in May of 2020 due to COVID-19 repercussions. We presented a revised, um, FY 21 budget to the Board of Selectmen on May 12th, 2020 and the advisory on May 13th, 2020. We collaborated with cap, cap, the capital budget committee on May 11th. And based on new guidance from the town for reduced town meeting expenditures and increased special town meeting allocations due to financial pressures from COVID-19. Present requests are 251, $880 for town meeting. So, goal four, support of facilities planned through budget review and capital requests. The committee supports the comprehensive analysis tool that the director of finance and operations has developed in order to rank projects to identify funding sources. So, um, Michael has put together a spreadsheet that shows all of our projects and a timetable for that. And that makes it easier for us when we go to capital budget to request things. The committee voted to reconstitute the school facilities committee with the intent to explore options for the replacement or renovation of the existing Cohasset Middle High School. Discussion with the board of selectmen will be on June 9th. That discussion, uh, took place. And so we're, we're in the middle of setting, um, sort of some ground rules around, uh, creating a facilities committee. Is that right, Ellen?
Uh, yes, it's actually, um, on our, coming up next on our agenda, to review with the board of selectmen on June the 23rd. And the, um, if you go on the town website for, um, board and committee appointment applications, the school facility committee has been added to the, the list of opportunities.
Okay, goal number five, student achievement. Ensure that all students are able to achieve appropriate growth and learning. Spotlight on learning focusing on project-based learning at the school committee meeting. So our sixth and seventh grade teachers presented, um, the results of their project-based learning experiment at one of our school committee meetings and it was on Hidden Figures and the Boy That Harnesses the Wind. And those took place in February. Fund the fiscal year 20 deferred request for a computer science teacher and curriculum. Unfortunately, that's a red light. We did not, we were not able to have that position be funded. Study the feasibility and models for adding foreign language and instruction at the elementary levels. That was a red light. We didn't get to that goal.
Sorry, everyone. No excuses.
Their goals, their goals. Spotlight on learning focusing on the arts, including a participation report in the arts curriculum and the arts-related extracurricular activities. Teacher, teachers Nina Berkowitz and Stephanie Moriarty presented a comprehensive view, review of the arts at Cohasset Middle High School on January 22nd. Um, this was, um, this goal was created with the idea that we were getting regular updates about the level of participation in sports. And we wanted to have a same sort of update to the committee, um, on the level of participation in the arts. Goal six. Social and emotional learning. Promote the social and emotional wellbeing of students. Support the commu-, support community committees focused on social and emotional wellbeing through regular participation at meetings. This is where our committee members go out and we liaise with different community groups. So we do that with safe harbors, the diversity and unity committees, safe schools committees, as well as elder affairs and CPAP. Um, invite MECO director and diversity club advisor and students for a presentation to the school committee. I'm sorry, we got a, a green light in our liaising with community committees. We also got a green light. Um, we had a presentation given by, um, MECO director Lisa Gittens Carl. And she presented an overview of PD for staff. Unfortunately, because of COVID, that professional development that she had organized didn't come to fruition. Um, and then the next one was analyze the financial impact of accelerating the implementation of responsive classroom at Deer Hill and Osgood. 19 teachers are left to be trained at a cost of approximately $14,750. And our summary. We updated the school committee operating protocols and handbook, which had not been updated since August of 2015. We approved four trips presented by our staff for our students. We approved 14 gifts totaling over $147,000 in cash and assets. We reviewed, revised and approved 10 policies. We held 25 subcommittee meetings. We appointed a representative of the Norfolk County Sheriff's Task Force on juvenile substance abuse and mental health. We adopted a resolution affirming that the Cohasset Public School District is a respectful district in line with the governor's counsel addressing sexual assault and domestic violence. This resolution supports the development of healthy relationships. And we approved changes to school start and end times. So I would say it was a busy year.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask for any comments or questions, but nobody's typing up or does anyone have anything? Nope. Okay. So next on the agenda is a school facilities committee objective and committee composition. So, uh, I'd like Craig, if you could take, you did the work on this. So if you could present it, please?
I'm sure. Um, before I, um, do that, Ellen, I just wanted to, uh, I mean, um, it's a, it's a, it was sort of a, you know, it's a lengthy document, but, but a ton of work went into what Jen just presented. And I really, excuse me, um, Mrs. Madden just presented. And, uh, I, I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. That's, that was a lot of work. And, and I, and we revisited constantly throughout the year. And, uh, thank you so much.
Well, it's, it's totally the, it's, it's everybody, everybody. So one of the things we do is, people sort, we do allocate people to do those goals. So there is tremendous amount of work done by, by everybody on the committee.
Okay, well, um, th- thanks Jen. So, um, uh, I mean, to backtrack there, just, just, um, moving on here. So, I mean, Madam Chairperson, I just, uh, these were, you know, I don't know, is this document I'm looking at, is this like what I sent you?
Yes, it's, it's in the packet. Everybody has it.
Okay, so this was, um, as I initially indicated over email, I was hoping it would be, you know, a collaborative effort. And this was just, these were my thoughts. I feel fairly strongly about this, this, uh, whole plan. I think that we could use, uh, new facilities, but, but at the very least explore the possibility and, and the viability of such an idea. So, um, I guess I, I'm not, certainly not going to read this document. What I would ask is if, if everyone has read it, if, if people have thoughts, we just go through the committee so that we can get everyone's, incorporate everyone's, uh, thoughts and, and, and perspectives and ideas.
Does anyone want to speak? No? Okay, um, okay. I will. I think, I think number one through eight is perfect. I think, I think it's general enough, but specific enough, and it covers, it covers so much, safety, technology, everything. I think if I look at the bylaw, the School Facility Committee, I think it's point number five, and I don't know, let me just find it. I think they report out to the town. I think School Facility Committee may proceed on its own initiative in these matters and shall respond promptly to all written requests from the school committee. I'm sorry. That's not the point. That's not the point I was looking at.
So, I actually, so after I wrote this, I sort of, I think I came to the conclusion that it was us. It would just be CSC. It's not BOS.
Correct. Well, yeah, it would not, it would not report out to the Board of Selectmen, no. They would, the School Facilities Committee, like other committees and boards in town that are appointed, are independent committees. And they receive, like, the Town Hall Building Committee was an independent committee of appointees, and they were presented with a charge by the Board of Selectmen, but then they worked independently, and they did provide periodic updates to the Board of Selectmen. So, I look at this much the same way that they would provide, the School Facility Committee would provide periodic updates to the Cohasset School Committee. So, I think you're fine in taking out the and/or Board of Selectmen. I don't, that's not appropriate. At the end of the day, they will make their recommendation to town meeting.
Right.
So, but their point of contact is the school committee. And I'd just like us to think about. What? How do I say this? Which campus, it says relative to construction of new school facilities in the district. My personal feeling is if we charge them to look at all four buildings, three campuses, and come up with a plan, it's daunting. And if I just think back anecdotally where the comments have come, they've been coming for a new middle high school, or a new middle school, or a new high. It's been my impression, and I could be wrong, but it's that campus that is where the initial interest comes from. Because I think, I think to have nine people kind of look at three with the work they have to do, it is a lot. But that's, and I would also like to kindly request that it's either construction, addition to, or remodeling of. Because if we say construction of new schools, if that's our charge, then that's the only option they look at.
Okay, so your proposed language of construction, I heard remodeling. What was the middle term that you used?
Addition.
I'm sorry?
You said adding, adding on to, right?
Right.
I think that's, I think that's valid. I think we can incorporate that. I would like to leave this, so to your, to your, to your former comment, I think new school facilities plural leaves it more general and broad. I'm trying to leave this as broad as possible. I understand, I take your point, Ellen, about keeping, sort of, trying to target their charge as much as possible. I kind of, I mean, it's already targeted in terms of the schools. So, I mean, I don't think they're going to have to dwell too much on, you know, which schools need to be replaced, if any. I just, I, so, the reason I'm getting this is because I think your latter point is sort of intertwined. The latter point points to the fact that construction is too specific, and I agree. I don't want to limit it to just the high school or middle school. That's my, that's my opinion. I'm one of five.
I agree, and I will tell you why. I think, so thank you, Craig, for doing this and for getting this while rolling. I think in matters like this, it makes sense to look at the whole picture. I have found, just to make sure that we're not sort of plugging a hole over here that exists right now, but then there's another hole over here that we didn't really see coming because we were just focused on that hole over there, you know? Which is not to say that that's how it will happen, but just that I think it is the responsible thing to do to have the committee look at the school facilities in the aggregate to make sure that all of the pieces fit together.
Paul, or Mr. Kearney, or Mrs. Madden, you guys have any input on this?
Jen, you're muted if you're talking.
I agree that having a little bit more focus is a good thing and that we look not at, not at everything. I think that the, it's just better if you charge the committee with, you know, as Ellen had stated, that we're really looking at this for the middle high school. So, I think that's a good, a good change.
Okay. Mr. Kearney, can you break the tie here in terms of what you think?
I don't even know if he's still here. So, here's, here's another, another way to slice it. So that, I think if we are open, if we leave this initial charge with construction remodel or addition of new school facilities in the district, we just have to be prepared that the charge can evolve and change as the School Facility Committee gets up and running and as they ask for guidance and direction. And if we're okay with that, I'm okay with that.
I mean, I think, I mean, so, to your point, Madam Chairperson, I think we can always go back, right? Like, in other words, excuse me, we can always, we can always whittle it down. We just can't make it broader once we do this, right? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right, right. It's much easier to contract an objective than it is to expand it.
Right.
Yes. Yeah. So.
Well, well said.
Yep. So, so the changes would be eliminate Board of Selectmen and just add addition and renovation, construction and/or addition and/or renovation of new school facilities, of school facilities. New construction or addition and renovation of school facilities in the district.
Okay. I will take care of that, and everyone else is on board with, geez, I, I'm, I don't know, I'm impressed with myself that no one had any edits to the other part of it. But, okay, great. That was easy.
Yep. Okay. So, if you, if you get the corrections done, Craig, and redistribute them, I will get them to the Board of Selectmen before their next meeting next week.
Sure. Can we, do we do the same sort of thing we do on other things? Where we just, are we voting on this subject to the revisions?
Sure, sure. So, can I have a motion? I have a motion to approve the School Facilities Committee charge as amended. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ashley, all in favor, roll call, please.
Aye, Jen, madam.
Aye, Ashley Caleri.
Aye, Ellen Marr.
Aye, Craig McLuhan.
Okay.
I don't believe Paul is, Mr. Kearney's in the meeting anymore.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. Okay. So, excellent. Great. And then the other thing, which, yeah, the composition of the committee. And there's, there's nine members. And I apologize, I don't, I don't have that second page. I think I missed it.
I had sent you an email, Ellen. I've been furiously trying to find it in my email.
You did, and I apologize. I've just kind of been a little.
No, I, because I thought it out. I took the time to think it through, and then, and then, now, you know, now I can't find it.
Yeah, I know. And I'm so inept at multitasking. I believe you said chief of police, fire chief. I think you had two teachers, two parents. I think your comment was that by virtue of the project planning group, there's probably an engineer on it as well already.
Yeah.
When we get to that stage, and an architect.
Well, I did, I did, I would like to see an architect just because then there's a different perspective of professional design.
Yeah.
It's sort of like, and I think I also suggested an attorney as well.
Yes, you did.
In terms of procuring grants and such, it may be helpful and able to articulate. But, so the engineer, I feel like one would be, one should be adequate, the one that's on the project.
Yeah.
But an architect, it may, it may be, and this is sort of like, I don't know, it's an arguable point. I just feel like it may be good to have, you know, just like sometimes with my ability to discuss with our council, things that, with a little bit more professional background there. It may be helpful to have an architect on the actual body so that they can interact with the architect on the job in a more meaningful sense, perhaps. And that was my thought. So, you were right, yes, two parents, two teachers, police and fire chief. That's six architects, seven lawyer, eight, and I don't remember who the ninth was.
Yeah, I don't remember either. I think it might have been the superintendent. But Patrick, do you think maybe you could speak to, if you recall, the composition of the Marshfield group? You're muted.
So, Marshfield did not go about it this way. Marshfield really worked with the, I'm not saying do this, I think this is the way to go, but the superintendent at the time was in charge of creating the whole group as basically, that's what the committee charged him to do. And he worked to create that group and literally interviewed folks to create that team. It was just a much different situation. So, that wouldn't help us much in this.
What kinds of people were on the team?
There were, there were, there were attorneys, architects, folks, I'm trying to think. Different people on different organizations, like a member of the MEF, which is, you know, our equivalent of the CEF.
Oh, Ellen, IT professional is the other one. I think that's very important. Sorry, Doc Sullivan. I just, I thought of it, and I want to say it.
Don't think I'm offering much, but basically, folks who were influential in the community, as you had mentioned, it was, it was a pretty broad range of representatives. I can probably find it, actually, in my documents. It's probably helpful.
Well, I think Craig's first stab at it kind of represents that. I would just comment, I believe I understand why you put the chief of police and the fire chief on there. I think we would be hard pressed to get them into service on such an intense committee like this. But that doesn't mean we couldn't have a public safety representative on it. But I guess we won't know till, you know, we won't know till we ask. They have to apply. So, the process is people apply for this. And we can come up with more than nine different types of people, depending upon, you know. We can ask for what, we can ask for the types of individuals we'd like to have, but at the end of the day, we're going to have to evaluate based on who applies and where our three votes go. You know, I'm thinking, but it might be a conflict of interest to have someone from Capital Budgets on there, but perhaps not. I'm trying to remember, composition of the Town Hall Committee was all independent of other boards. The Town Hall Renovation Committee. Does anyone have any, anyone else have any other thoughts?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I want to make sure, like, Michael did a great job of, like, outlining some of the procedures going on. Next year, they'll all meet along with, I think you put together something, Michael, that I don't want to make sure that we just bundle everything in here. I want to make sure that his work continues. And that was every year, the facilities people get together. Is that quite right, Michael?
Yeah. Well, that's, so that, that's our capital planning process, and that will definitely continue to go on. Just because it's a, you know, this, from what I understand, this committee is going to be looking at the big picture, like, you know, what you should do. Whereas we are still going to have to look at, you know, this, you know, the tiles have to be replaced, the windows have to be fixed, you know, that's going to be ongoing. I mean, hopefully, the work that we do, or you guys will do, will feed into that committee.
Right. Or maybe we can advise that committee as well.
Yeah.
I know that we spoke about just the middle school and high school. However, Deer Hill, as you know, needs a lot of work as well with the tiles and the
Yeah.
air conditionings, to the windows, to, I mean, there's a.
Hill just got approved.
Yeah, that's happened.
Well, the windows did, but they still need a whole host of things, such as desks. And, you know, they have some rib bars coming right out of the cement. I mean, there's just some major issues that need to address there. I just want that to be recognized, that it's just not one building that needs. And Osgood, as nice as it is, it's, there's also a lot of needs there as well.
I think it's, Paul, I think you bring up a good point, and it's very important that these, that it runs parallel, that the School Facility Committee runs parallel with the schools and the school committee in terms of, you know, everyday maintenance. We heard from Diane Sullivan, the MSBA rep, that like, if you let your buildings, you know, deteriorate, doesn't mean you're going to get money from us. And in fact, they don't, they don't look kindly upon that. So, we do have an obligation to continue to down our path of school building improvement while this separate committee is working on, as whomever just said, you know, the real big picture plan. So. Yeah, I would not want, Paul, at all, any of the work that's been started to cease because of this other committee. So, I think the, in terms of the composition, we don't have to vote on it. I think the Board of Selectmen, we're just looking at recommendations. So, when the piles of applications start coming in, they can say, oh, well, we have an architect applied, but maybe we want to see if they'll be interested in this School Facility Committee as opposed to something else. So, as long as we just have an idea, I think that's fine.
Ellen, one other, because you mentioned the police and fire chief may not be the best candidates because, because they may not be available for the time commitment. I think that's a fair point. Maybe they can act as consultants at some, you know, part of the process intermittently. But what, so it was sort of the runner-up for me was some sort of like, energy consultant or someone that's into alternative energy. It may be a good thing to have that perspective on the, on that committee. Maybe something that, for people to consider. I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to add it to the list because I think moving forward, renewable energy is a huge thing. And if our facility is, I put it in the charge about, you know, green processes. I think it could be really worthwhile and valuable to include that, you know, and have a really sort of state-of-the-art facility that, well, I'll be quiet. We're running a little late, so I.
Yeah. No, I think that's good. And I think if we come up with ten or twelve different kinds of people we want on the committee, and it gets, it'll get weeded down just by virtue of the application.
Right, right.
I think that's fine. Okay.
We have some excellent candidates from the Alternative Energy Committee.
Agreed. That's what I was thinking, Jen.
I mean, they're very knowledgeable and were very.
Yeah, they're excellent.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So, we did that. We did that. Excellent. Let's keep moving. Is everybody okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, the next thing, it's pretty boilerplate. It's a resolution, a school committee resolution to, that will go to, as you see, Governor Baker, the Secretary of Education, Commissioner of Education, just about funding, any funding for COVID-19. The last count as of this afternoon that I got was nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Almost thirty districts have voted and returned the resolution, including our neighbors in Hall, Situate, and Hangham, Andy's Bridgewater, and Michael's new district, Monomoy. You'll be happy to hear that, Michael. So, I just want to see if everyone's in agreement that, on this resolution.
I'm in agreement.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Any other comments?
I'm in agreement.
Oh, I agree.
Okay, great, thank you. So can I have a motion to approve the Cohasset School Committee Resolution on COVID-19 State Funding as submitted?
Don't move.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor, roll call, please.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Ashley Caleri.
Aye, Ellen Mar.
Aye, Jen Madden.
Did we lose Craig?
All right, sorry. Aye, Craig McClellan.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I will get this filled out and sent in, and they're also asking to send it to our reps, and Joan Moschino, and Patrick O'Connor, and so I will send it out, I'll copy everybody in, so you can, you can see where it goes. Thank you. I have no experience in terms of how these resolutions, if they are or are not successful, but it, it doesn't hurt. Okay. And then, so that, that's it. Are there any reports from subcommittees or liaisons?
I can just report two things from the Unity Council and the Hangum Unity Council, which is one of the members of the South Shore Unity Council, is going to be doing two events upcoming that sound great. One is a Facebook Live event to celebrate Juneteenth, which is Friday, June 19th, at 7:30 PM. They're actually having, I'm not going to remember his name, but a Hangum High School Social Studies teacher talk about the significance of that date, and talk a little bit more about why we celebrate it. And they're also doing a fireside book chat with Dolly Chugh, I think her last name, it's spelled C-H-U-G-H, I'm not sure of the pronunciation, I apologize, but she wrote a book called "The Person You Mean to Be: How Good People Fight Bias." So that is going to take place on July 9th at 7:00 PM on Zoom, and you have to register in advance. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent.
I just want to report that the fifth grade parade was adorable. And lots of fun, and I've heard lots of feedback from parents who thought that the Deer Hill team did a wonderful job, sort of making the most of the situation, and that kids were really happy with the parade.
That's my favorite report so far, Jen.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't even know if I've been to committee or liaison meetings, to be honest with you. The days are blurring. Okay. So, that being said, we'll just move on to approval of minutes. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have three groups of minutes to approve. So, may I have a motion to approve executive session minutes of June 5th, October 10th, November 6th, November 20th, December 18th, December 4th, February 5th, February 26th, and April 1st.
Don't move.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Aye, Ellen Mar.
Aye, Jen Madden.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Craig McClellan.
I abstain, Ashley Caleri.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve executive session minutes of March 25th and May 6th?
Don't move.
Second?
So, second?
Okay, roll call.
Aye, Jen Madden.
Aye, Ellen Mar.
Aye, Craig McClellan.
Okay. Paul, are you going to abstain?
I think I have to, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I'll abstain, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And finally, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 7th, December 10th, October 30th, and July 11th?
Don't move.
Thank you.
I'll second you.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Aye, Ellen Mar.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
I abstain, Ashley Caleri.
Abstain, Jen Madden.
Aye, Craig McClellan.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Abstain, I'm just finishing the notes. Okay, great. Unless anyone has anything else, I think at 8:53, we're ready to wrap up.
Don't move, move to adjourn.
Okay, move to adjourn at 8:53 by Mr. McClellan.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Kearney. Roll call, please.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Ashley Caleri.
Aye, Ellen Mar.
Aye, Jen Madden.
Aye, Craig McClellan. Congrats, Jen.
I just had a vision of Michael just throwing confetti.
Michael.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Bye, thank you. Thanks, everybody.